Mic check for the YouTube stream. Mic check for the YouTube stream.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Anne McCauley. I am the Chair of the Scarborough Panel Committee of Adjustment. I am joined by my fellow panel members, Mr. Howe, Mr. Khan, Ms. O'Mahon, and Mr. Stinson. In accordance with Section 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from provisions of the zoning bylaw that applies to the property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We have a land acknowledgement that at the start of every public meeting we give, we acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Hutanki, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit and the Williams Treaty, signed with multiple Mississauga and Chipewa bands. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connected with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you're called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allocated speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist's role if you fail to respect this instruction. Receiving a copy of the decision of the committee. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto Local Appeal Body will only be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto Local Appeal Board, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specific public bodies, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Our hearing procedure today. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. I note, for those in the room, there was an agenda posted outside the doors so that you could see what item you are in, get an idea of when you will be called upon to speak. Where an application is making your submission. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. The timer is on the board there, and it will start when the speakers starts. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the committee. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will speak first, and will make a presentation to committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application substantially revised, to ensure the revised application is accurate, and that all those entitled to receive notice are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposition to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we will call on speakers in the hearing room first, and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant and agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that are raised by the speakers. That will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into the committee for a decision and further discussion. Before hearing the first item, confirmation of minutes of the last meeting. Can I have a motion? Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Minutes of August 22, 2024 be adopted as circulated.
Thank you. Can I have a secondary?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a motion, Mr. Khan, seconded by Ms. O'Mahon, to approve the minutes of the last meeting. All those in favor? Thank you. That motion is carried. Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any declarations of interest of the panel or staff?
Through the chair, there are none from staff.
Panel, are there any declarations of interest? No. Thank you. Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurers, have you received any requests for deferral?
Through the chair, there is one deferral request for this hearing. It's item number 11, 1207 Warden Avenue, deferral signee die at the request of the applicant to address concerns identified by community planning.
Thank you. Does the applicant is online? You have requested a deferral. Do you wish to comment on it, or shall we just proceed to the applicant? We can proceed. Okay. What is the?
Hello, members of the committee.
Good morning. You are the applicant. We, and I understand you have submitted a request for deferral. We are going to vote on your request. All those in?
Through the chair, for the record, the person should announce their name and their address for the record.
Thank you. So, Madam, would you?
My name is April.
And your address, please?
My name is April Carty from DA Design. The address is 1185 Unit 3A, Queensway East, Mississauga.
Okay, thank you. All right. We'll proceed with?
Madam Chair, if you're ready, I'm happy to move a motion.
Okay.
So, I move a motion to defer the application signee die. This was requested by the applicant, as they would like to address concerns that have been identified by planning.
Okay, I have a motion from Ms. O'Mahon, seconded by?
Thank you, Chair. I'll second the motion.
By Mrs. Stinson. All those in favor of the deferral? That motion is carried. That item is deferred, your deferred signee die.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We will proceed with the first item on the agenda, which is for 917 Victoria Park Avenue. The application is both a consent and two variances. The consent is to create two lots, each having a frontage of 7.62 metres and an area of 246 metres square. And with the consents, there are seven variances. The proposal is to permit a two-story dwelling unit with a garage, two new dwelling units on the property. Is the applicant online? Thank you. Good morning, sir. Do you wish to make a presentation?
I wouldn't. Good morning. My name is Nadeem Irfan, and I am an architect. Ten Millner Business Corp., Suite 700, Scarborough, Ontario. I'm the applicant and architect of this application. I do not want to make a formal presentation. If the committee member has any question, I'm here. There are, we have submitted a presentation material comparative analysis. There are lots available on immediate vicinity, similar sizes, there are lot fracture and support. The variances are very minor in nature. We were able to submit 19 support letter. There is no planning staff report, and councillor is in contact with the applicant, the homeowner, and there is no concern from their side. So, if the committee member has any question, we are happy to answer. We look for the positive.
Okay, thank you. You have reviewed the conditions from Engineering and Construction Services and Urban Forestry Conditions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and you have no issues with those?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Any questions from committee? No questions? All right. It's for a consent and accompanying variances. We can deal with all three of them at once. Do I have a motion?
Sure. Madam Chair, I would move a motion for approval. If you look at the street, there's different sizes of houses. There are two similar lots as is proposed in the severance at 921 and 901. I think that this meets the four tests and fits within the context of this neighbourhood. I would move approval of the application, including the engineering report, as well as forestry conditions 1, 2, and 3.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. I will second that motion.
Hey, I have a motion for approval for Ms. O'Mahon, seconded by Mr. Stinson. That's approval of the consent and two variance applications. All those in support? All those in opposition? We have four members in support. That application is carried. We have one member, Mr. Han, in opposition. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to?
Thank you.
Number 2, 1680 Brimley Road. Is the applicant online? Thank you. Okay. Let me just bring up the material on this application. This is an application for a consent to create two properties, divide the existing property into two. The location is Brimley, 1680 Brimley Road. Is the, would the applicant please identify himself and give his address?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair. My name is Max Laskin from Goodman's LLP. Our address is 333 Bay Street, Suite 3400, Toronto, Ontario.
Thank you, Mr. Laskin. Have you seen the added item from Construction and Transportation Engineering? I report that?
Engineering and Construction Services, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yes. It was created September 16th. We have reviewed that, and it's the product of extensive coordination between staff and our client. We are comfortable with those conditions, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are there any questions from the members? Mr. Khan, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had questions, but I don't think I'll get the answer. I have consulted my superior in this regard, but I'm a little bit concerned about the density of the population that four tower will create. And that density has been looked into by the planners. So, I don't want to ask that question.
Okay. Are you then satisfied?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions at the applicant? Yes?
Hi, Mr. Laskin. Can you just confirm that, just for clarification, that this severance request is primarily to allow for separate ownership so that the owner can retain for the next phase and that this first phase can proceed?
Yes, that is correct. Thank you for the question. The purpose of the consent and severance is to facilitate the independent financing of each of the two phases of development, which will allow the first phase of 900 or so purpose-built rental units to commence below grade construction, and to allow for Phase 2 to proceed at the appropriate time to follow.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, another question, Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, my question, it's not a question, it's just a concern that I want to express and should be listened to, is that the proposition, that proposal, it will have a high-density four-tower population of 1,561 apartments there. My concern is, which I want to just bring it out, is the traffic control, although there is no related variance in front of us, but it is a concern that I want to express should be taken into account.
Okay, thank you. This application is for consent only, and through the zoning bylaw and site plan control application, perhaps the applicant can tell us whether transportation planning has looked at this application and those other processes?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Yes, thank you. So, by way of background, this, the application for the four towers that have been referenced were approved in 2017. That process was a long one, of more than 10 years of work with city staff. And through that process, there was extensive analysis by transportation staff, and of course by our clients' transportation consultants, to analyse the transportation network, the capacity of that network to accommodate the proposed density. And city staff support and supported the proposal at that time. And through the site plan process, staff have also reviewed and approved the proposal as it relates to transportation movement in the site and transportation capacity. So, Madam Chair, you're absolutely correct to say that that matter is not before the committee today with the consent application, but if it assists to provide comfort, I can say that staff have reviewed this application extensively, both through the zoning approval process and through the site plan application, which has already been approved.
Okay, thank you. Is that satisfactory?
Thank you very much. If I may continue a supplemental?
Yes, you have another question?
Thank you. My other concern was, is, I mean, although everything is hunky-dory fine, but has any consultation been done before applying for the permit?
I'm sorry, I don't understand. Which permit are you looking at?
I mean, coming for this application before the Committee of Adjustment, any consultation in the neighbourhood has been done before applying?
For the consent application?
That's right.
Okay. Sir, was there any consultation in the community for the consent application? I don't believe there's?
Yes, I can provide background on that as well. So, just by way of background, the approval in 2017 that I referenced with respect to the zoning application was the product of a settlement between our client and its neighbours to the south and to the north. And those neighbours supported that approval. As part of this consent application, notice was provided, and our client continues to engage with its neighbours as it commences construction, as is appropriate. And so, yes, the neighbours are aware, and as you can see, no concerns have been identified.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just going to make two comments here. I went normally, but this development is a large development. I understand that the entire development is going to be for rental apartments, which are desperately needed in Toronto. And secondly, you are using some form of engineering that is a new process. Can you just tell us, confirm that it's rental apartments? And can you tell us quickly what that other process is?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, answer to the first question about rental is correct. All approximately 1,600 units are intended to be purpose-built rental, and in fact, this is the largest purpose-built rental development to commence construction in 2023 or 2024 in the GTHA. It is a very important project with respect to providing rental housing for the community. The engineering matter that you're referencing, Madam Chair, I believe is the geothermal system that is proposed to provide heating and cooling for the site. That's a system that relies on groundwater to facilitate heating and cooling, and dramatically reduces emissions flowing from the proposed development, Madam Chair, and is a, an important and very effective means of reducing the climate impact of this project, which is something that is important to our client.
Okay, thank you very much for adding that. Another question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you again. My question is, the total residence units are 1,591, and the parking underground is 1208. There's a difference of some hundred. Now, how do you, do you have any surface parking that will subsidise the rest of the people?
Through you, Madam Chair, no. There is no surface parking proposed here, given that this is a high-density development in a transit area. And that was, again, the product of extensive discussion with staff. In a high-density node like this, surface parking is not permitted nor encouraged. All parking is below grade.
I will remind the members that we're only dealing with the consent, the severance of the property into two different ownerships. So, most of those other items have already been dealt with.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Stinson.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Khan, for your sobering second thought, and Mr. Laskin, thank you for your presentation. Basically, I just want to recap a few things I've noticed here. This property is uniquely situated where public transit is very accessible. It's also to the 401 corridor. And while parking is, as the other committee member pointed out correctly, a differential, this city has determined in the last few years that that is part of our planning, that we are having a city that doesn't have parking spots that always match the units to live in. And there's a reason for that. We're trying to move away from vehicles and use more public transit. I'd also say that we have heard from Mr. Laskin that there's been 10 years put into this. I'm quite personally satisfied as a committee member that I will be approving this application, and if there is an opportunity to put forth a motion, I'll do that. Thank you.
Any other questions of committee members? No? Are we ready for a motion?
Through the chair. I'm not sure if you asked if there's anybody in the audience who wished us to speak on this application. Did you do that already?
No, I'm sorry. Thank you very much for reminding me. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on the application for 1680 Brimley Road? Not seeing any? And I have no, none, no one else listed on a virtual? Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
I would like to offer one. Thank you, Chair. Based on what we've heard and discussed, I would like to move that we approve the applications upon the, of course, conditions that have been put in by the Engineering and Construction Services and Urban Forestry Services.
Okay. All those, I need a secondary?
Through the chair, I move to second this motion.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion for approval for Mr. Stinson, seconded by Mr. Howe. All those in favour? Thank you, sir. Your application is approved, subject to conditions. Okay, we will?
Thank you very much.
We're moving on to item number? We're moving on to item number three, 98 Pitt Avenue. 98 Pitt Avenue is an application to divide this property into two lots and create two new dwelling units. There are, I believe, seven variances required with this. Is the applicant online? Thank you.
Sorry, good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Would you give us your name and your address, please, sir?
Yes, Jonathan Metzelski, 301 Kiwanton Avenue.
Okay. Do we want a short presentation? No? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to the application for 98 Pitt Avenue? It's an application to create two new lots. No, not seeing anyone? All right. What is the wish of share? This is the committee.
If there are no questions, I'm happy to move a motion, Madam Chair. I'm not sure to my colleagues, it doesn't look like it. Okay.
And we have conditions from?
Engineering and forestry?
Yep.
Okay, I assume, Mr. Bencowsky, you're aware of the engineering report and the forestry conditions?
Through you, Madam Chair. I am Mr. Solomon.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, if you're ready for a motion, then. Okay, I'd like to move approval of the application. I feel it meets the four tests. It fits within the context of this neighborhood, including the engineering report dated July 26th and forestry conditions two and three.
Okay, and this is a consent application as well as the two variances?
Yeah, so this is for the whole thing, for all of them?
Everything, okay.
I will second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion for approval of the consent and variances from Ms. Oman and seconded by Mr. Khan. All those in favor? Thank you. A short set.
Thank you.
To the applicant. I appreciated the mapping and the information that you provided of similar lots in this area. This is an area that has had a number of consent applications and variances, and it's good to have a whole picture of the lot size and lot fabric. So thank you very much for providing that information.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. We'll move now to item number four. A minute, sir. My computer is not working as fast as what I would like. I think it's a problem of the operator who's not working as fast as what I should. Okay, this is an application for a variance for 59 Heather Road in Agent Court, which is the property of St. Bartholomew's Church. The application is to permit addition to the existing parish hall and to increase the lot coverage and add only two of the required 48 parking spaces. So you, sir, are you the applicant?
Yes.
Describe your name and address, please.
Roy Basso, 530 Rontry Dairy Road, Unit 3, Invaughn.
Okay. Do you wish to make a presentation or do you wish to answer questions?
I'm happy to answer any questions. Perhaps in lieu of the presentation, I would just like to further express to the committee the significance of the need for this hall. The church was originally constructed in 1976, so it's been about 50 years. Since that time, the church has amassed over 2,000 registered families, many of which are part of various programs, committees, and so on. And they don't have a proper facility to host these various organizations. So there is very much a desperate need for this. We have a lot of support for this new addition that we're proposing to construct, many of which have submitted letters of support to you. We have various members of the parish that are in attendance today as well. I understand that there may also be a letter in the system of support from Councilor Jamal Myers, but I'm not sure if that made it formally to the file. But we just wanted to express the need for this and that we are very much appreciative and seeking your support in this approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. This is the applicant. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, my question is, how many parking spaces you have at the moment?
At this time, there are 48 available parking spaces on our property.
I couldn't follow, how many?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight?
Yes.
You were earlier given 10 spaces deficiency allowance. Now you are asking two again. So how much it makes? How deficient are you?
We are deficient, because of the scale of the addition that we're proposing, I forget the, I don't recall the exact figure, but we are deficient, I believe, 30 or 40 spaces. However, there is an agreement in place on site to use an expanded portion of our site to the south as well as to the west side to allow for the parking overflow. That's an agreement that's been in place for over 40 years. And there's, we have letters of intent to maintain that agreement.
Thank you. Madam Chair, my second question is, if I may be, thank you. What is the distance, you are, first of all, you are trying to add in front of the church, right?
Correct.
So my question is, what is the distance between Brimley Road and church front when you are doing the addition?
From Brimley Road, I believe it's nine meters, if I'm correct. We're not, we're not seeking any variances for it. We're complying with the existing setbacks that are in place, nine and 12, nine meters and 12 meters with our addition. We do not intend to go anywhere within that setback requirement with our addition.
Thank you.
Okay. I have Mr. Stegall, who I understand, I know is a planner and wrote a report here. Did you, did you wish to add anything?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Just on the question of parking, the two, of the two variances that we have, the parking variance is a technical variance in that it's to the former Scarborough Community zoning bylaw. There is no variance required to the current City of Toronto bylaw, 569, 2013. It's only because there are still outstanding appeals having to do with parking, with not just other places of worship, but just generally parking so that the building department sees that the old bylaw is still in place. The old bylaw was a requirement based on gross floor area irrespective of the use. The new bylaw only requires parking for worship space. And as this is now a parish hall and not worship space, you will see in the zoning review from the zoning examiner, there is no requirement to the new zoning bylaw, only to the old bylaw.
However, you do have a variance for two parkings versus the 48 required.
Correct.
Under the existing bylaw that's in place at the moment.
Correct. So in, through Mr. Basso's magic, we have 48 spaces today, but he has found two more spaces through restriping. And the zoning examiner has seen that increase of two as being the in-lu number for the old bylaw.
Okay, all right. It's a fairly confusing bylaw. When I was reading how they have changed from place of worship being the entire property to only the worship area.
That's correct.
As requiring parking. It's a change. Any other questions? No? Any, yes, Mr. Stinson?
Thank you for your, thank you, Chair. Thank you for your presentation. Reminds me of a story about loaves and fishes. So we found two new parking spots. That's good. In light of what's been said and in light of looking at the planning, I'm for this application. I think that there is other options, as the speaker pointed out, about parking in the area. And I'm satisfied that it meets the four test rules, so I'll be approving it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, Mr. Khan? Yes?
Through the chair. Could the applicant advise how many total parking areas available through other, through the neighbors?
The, or the adjacent parking spaces that are available?
Yeah, for both sides.
There is a total to the south of 93 spaces and to the west, 76.
Okay. So in total, about 100 and, 93 and 47, 140?
A total will be over 200 spaces, yeah. About 210 spaces, 220.
Thank you, very much.
Any other questions?
Just for interest sake, are they informal agreements or are they registered on title, the parking agreements?
Part of our, Paul, if you'd like to speak to the specifics, but we do have a letter that we submitted as part of our application.
Yeah, I saw it.
That is acting as proof of the agreement?
Certainly. So through you, Madam Chair. The circumstance is that the Catholic Archdiocese and the Catholic School Board have an agreement that covers probably, I want to say maybe 80 properties similar to this where they are adjacent. And there is an arrangement whereby they will share the spaces for overflow purposes, whether it's for school purposes or for church purposes. And that agreement generally has to do with maintenance, snow removal, and that sort of thing. And this is one that has been in place really since the church was constructed.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? No? Okay, are we ready for a motion? Mr.? Mr. Howe? Mr. Howe? Okay, go ahead.
Through the chair. I would like to move an approval of this motion. Based on hearing the applicant and all the answers to their questions, I'm satisfied that the concerns of parking space will be met through the neighboring properties, through agreements, as well as we have seen letters of support that these kind of arrangements will continue into the future. On the other front about the first item, the added floor space to 28%, I feel that is minor in nature and it meets the general intent of the zoning bylaw as well as our official plan. And I'm satisfied that this application is, meets the tests for minor variances and I would move to approve of this application.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Howe. I have the motion moved for approval for Mr. Howe, seconded by Mr. Stinson?
Thank you, Chair. I'll second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor? That motion is carried. Your application is approved. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Our next application is number 35 Sierra Avenue. It's a variance application. Purpose is to construct a covered deck in the rear yard. And the issue is dealing with lot coverage. Is the applicant in the audience?
Through the chair. Gregory is not online and he is not in person.
Oh dear.
We've reached out to Gregory, but we weren't able to get a hold of him.
Madam Chair, perhaps you could hold it down till the end of the meeting?
Yeah. All right, we will hold that item down to the end of the meeting because we do have some questions for him. Okay. Moving right along. Our next item is number 659 Regency Square. I understand there's a number of people in the audience for this application. This application is to permit a new two-story dwelling with a floor space index of 321.5 meters squared versus 279 meters squared. Is the applicant in the audience? No? Is the applicant online? Thank you very much, sir.
Yes. Yes, madam.
Before we proceed, we have a number of people, I believe, in the audience who wish to speak to this matter. So I am going to ask that those who wish to speak to this matter, if you come down to the front, after the applicant has done, has given his presentation and we've asked the questions, you will have an opportunity to speak. There are also people who wish to speak on a virtual. So the people in the audience get to speak first, then we'll listen to the virtual, we'll listen to the people who wish to speak on the virtual platform. Then the applicant will have an opportunity to speak again, to answer any questions that have arisen from the comments that were raised by the community. So, starting off, would, who won, who in the audience wishes to speak on this application? It's for 59 Regency Square. I, yep. We're going to. Yep. I just want them all down there. Okay, each person who wants to speak, you get five minutes. And note, the time is up there. I'm not sure why. Okay, there is a bench there if you both want to sit there. And then I will call upon you after we've heard from the applicant. Okay. The applicant is online. Mr. Absele, would you please identify yourself and give your address?
Hello, my name is Mohammed Absele. My address is 2196 Britannia Road, West Mississauga. I am the agent on this application as well as I'm the engineer who prepared the rise and submitted to the city.
Okay. Sir, you have five minutes to make a presentation. Do you wish to proceed with a presentation?
Thank you, madam. Okay, we have a proposal to construct a two-story residential dwelling for triplex. And there will be one main unit on the ground floor and the second floor primarily for the owner of the property. And there will be two small units in the basement. So it makes a triplex building. And its zoning is RD 123, which led to exception 1462. And in 1462, the grass floor area is limited to 279. And in terms of FSI, it is .43. And we are proposing a grass floor area of the building, 321.5. This, in terms of FSI, it is .5. So there is a difference of .07 between the proposed and the allowed FSI. Originally, we submitted the proposal in front of the committee in January this year. And at that time, we are requesting 354.1 square meter. And that was a .55 FSI. But because of the opposition and resistance from the neighborhood, we decided to request deferment of this application. Then we revised the rise and we reduced the floor. Then we revised the drawings, and we reduced the floor space index to three-twenty-one. So around, there is a difference, let's say, it's, we reduced around forty square meter of our original proposal. There is a drawing, I submitted along with the set of drawing, it's called Floor Status Heads. As you can see, the changes which, which we have brought about to make it, to make the neighbors happy with this proposal, but anyway, still there is a resistance, and this floor space index point-five. Instead of point-four-three is a very minor thing. If we look into the other, other decisions of the committee of adjustment, in this, what we call it, in this area, Ward twenty, Ward twenty-four, and then I compared it to other other area, I found this minor, this request for minor variance is very small, minor in nature, and the proposal meet the four criteria of the acceptance of variance through committee or adjustment. It meets the general intent and purpose of town's official plan, and is in official plan map twenty-three. It is under the area and labeled as neighborhood, and the houses, detached houses, semi-detached houses, duplex, duplex and townhouses are, are, they, they are diverse housing, which comes under the neighborhood. Also, it meets the general intent and purpose of town's zoning bylaw, and I mentioned that the, there is a minor difference between the allowed floor space index and the requested floor space index. This is minor in nature, and also, yes, very, very desirable for the property.
Can you wind up, please?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I am winding up. And the fourth, third test is that this, we need to see that this variance is desirable for the property and compatible with the adjacent users and properties. I, I believe we, we also satisfy that criteria, and number four is minor in nature. I have already requested that thing.
Okay.
This is all from my side. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Are there any questions of the applicant at this time? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. My question is, did you have any meeting with the neighborhood before applying for the variance that you, that you did?
Yeah, yes, we met with the representative of neighborhood in the office of the owner somewhere in the, in the prior of this year, and at that time, by that time, we had revised drawings, we showed the revised drawings, and we, we explained what changes we are bringing in the drawings to, to, to come to revisions of the neighbors, and at that time, they listened our proposal very interestingly, and they, they, they said that they would discuss with the other members of the neighborhood. After that, the owner of the property had some email conversation with the neighbors, but still, they, they, they are not happy with the proposal, and their main, main saying is that this property is very big, as massing character and the size of the property is big. But my, what I told the, those, the representative at that time, that this property is very reasonable in size. We are expecting the setback, sideyard setback. For example, sideyard setback is only one-point-eight meter required, and we are providing more than two meter on either side.
Can you wind up?
Also, we have left a lot of, yeah, so they, they-
The question was-
We, we discussed very, very deep.
The question was, had you met with the community, and you say you have met with some members of the community. The councillor has written that he is against this proposal and that sets a bad precedent for the area. Did you meet with the councillor?
I asked the owner to meet the councillor, but probably, probably he tried what he could not meet.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant at this time? No? Okay. Sir, the first gentleman, would you come to the podium? Give us your name, your address, and then you have five minutes.
Good morning. My name is Don Briggs and I live at sixty-six Regency Square. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I was originally going to go last out of the speakers, so this might seem a little disjointed, but I'll do my best. Mr. Ali, the owner of fifty-nine Regency Square, has applied for a minor variance. He wants to demolish which, which was once a lovely family home and replace it with an oversized building. That is not a minor undertaking, however, his application is proceeding through the system as if it is. On the COA website, the four tests that a variance must pass are defined in layman's terms: to be minor in both size and impact, to be desirable for the development of the site and neighboring lands, must try to maintain appropriate relationships with buildings, allowing for green space, or providing a certain level of parking, and must respect and reinforce neighborhood character. Now, Mr. Mohammed Mughal, and I hope I pronounced that correctly, a registered professional planner, submitted a letter to the Committee of Adjustment endorsing Mr. Ali's plan. In his letter, Mr. Mughal tries to justify how Mr. Ali's application complies with each of the four tests. He can't do it. Now, Regency Square neighbor Anthony Carnaccia, who is scheduled to speak shortly, has outlined very clearly why the proposal does not satisfy the four tests. In addressing the fact the change must be minor in both size and impact, Mr. Mughal states, and I quote, "Minor is determined by impact, not by the value of the variance being sought." If Mr. Mughal is correct, and it's the impact that matters most, then suffice to say the impact of Mr. Ali's plan on the adjacent properties, on Regency Square, the street, on the environment, and on the community of Guildwood as a whole is not at all positive. I encourage you to reread the many submissions of objection and concern that were sent to the COA from Guildwood neighbors. They explain how harmful Mr. Ali's proposed major development will be in so many ways. If the impact was minor, why would so many neighbors send letters to the COA objecting to this application? Why would so many people make the effort to be here today or to join the hearing online? Why would the Guildwood Village Community Association have submitted a letter of objection? Why would our city councillor, Paul Ainsley, have submitted a letter of objection? The answer is that none of these actions would have been necessary if Mr. Ali's renovation plan was reasonable and indeed minor in nature. I don't think it's a stretch to assume that Mr. Ali, an absentee owner, and Mr. Mughal have spent little time in Guildwood. I say that because in Mr. Mughal's letter, he suggests that by building this massive structure in the midst of a neighborhood of modest, single-family homes, Mr. Ali will, and I quote, "contribute to revitalizing the area and increase the value of the area as well." Well, let's talk about revitalization. Guildwood is full of vitality. This is a copy of the latest issue of Guildwood Village News and Views, a neighborhood magazine published quarterly. In it is an article recounting Guildwood Day in words and pictures. It's a day that residents come together to celebrate the wonderful community we call home. Guildwood Day is just one of the many neighborhood events held throughout the year. All are designed to create and nurture community spirit. With all due respect to Mr. Ali and Mr. Mughal, Guildwood doesn't need revitalizing. Mr. Mughal suggests that the proposed structure will increase the value of the area as well. He's provided no evidence to support such a claim. I would suggest that those living adjacent to fifty-nine, opposite to it, or in its immediate vicinity, would not realize any financial benefit from its existence whatsoever. The concern is just the opposite. Property values will drop. Discerning buyers would not likely be interested in purchasing a home located near one like Mr. Ali wants to build. Privacy, safety, parking issues would be their major concerns. That reduces the number of potential buyers. That doesn't add value. That is real estate one-on-one. In his letter, Mr. Mughal states-
Would you wrap up?
Oh, darn it. I would suggest, again, going back and looking at the concerns of the neighbors. They put a lot of time and effort and thought into it. There are many legitimate safety, technical, environmental, infrastructure, property value, privacy, neighborhood character, and historical concerns that have been raised. Mr. Ali's provided you with a drawing. Guildwood has provided you with an insight into what community is all about. Should this application be approved, the impact on our street, our neighborhood, and our community will be major and harmful. I implore the Committee of Adjustment to deny Mr. Ali's application. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions for the speaker? Go ahead. No, you stay there. There's a question for you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. My question is, sir, did you have, were you part of the community meeting with the applicant?
I was not. There were two of our neighbors-
Sir, kindly listen to me. And did you raise all this concern that you are bringing in front of us?
Sorry, I don't understand.
My question is, you had the meeting with the applicant, right?
No, I was not.
Oh, you're not. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, sir, for your presentation. It was well done. Are you familiar with some of the literature? Page six with respect to the, the applicant's package on page six with the massing photos?
I wouldn't say I am intimately. I'm more of a guy just talking on behalf of the neighborhood, the numbers guys and the detail guys are still to come, so.
And I appreciate your frankness. Let me ask you a question in a different way. There is another house on this street. It's sixty-five. It's a, it's a larger home. It's not original.
Mm-hmm.
What are, when you see that down the street, this is not unprecedented for the original homes to be subs, let's say, supersized or made larger. What, what's your thoughts on that?
So sixty-five is right across the street from me, and it was renovated before we moved in, so that'd be more like eleven, twelve, thirteen years ago. It fits. It looks good in the neighborhood. It's similar to the styles of the other houses, side-split. They've maintained the character, and it's a, it's a lovely home. Nice family lives in it, and it, it's nothing like what is proposed for fifty-nine.
Okay. And I appreciate that answer. If there is a speaker here today that has seen the massing photos, we have a series of photos that say, before sale, two thousand and eighteen, originally proposed and then revised, and I'd like to hear if anybody from the community will speak to that and how the applicant has tried to make adjustments.
Okay.
Any other questions for the speaker? Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Sit down and the next speaker, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Yep. I've, the name is Andy Mannahan, resident at eighty-eight Regency Square. I've been in that location since two thousand and eight, but I've also, for most of my life, resided in Scarborough since nineteen sixty-seven. I'm also part of the committee that Mr. Briggs referred to, so I can comment perhaps a little bit further on some of the questions that the committee members have had. I should note as well that we have been working with councillor Ainsley, and he did submit a letter not only to the January seventeenth committee, but also to this committee that is in your record, and we've been working with the Guildwood Village Community Association, and I did reach out to the president last week, and he said that the letter that they sent in January stands in opposition to this new proposal. Just to correct the record, Mr. Ali just spoke with response to Mr. Khan's question about whether he met with the community, and that was a directive that was provided by this committee on January the seventeenth. In fact, Mr. Ali did not reach out to us. We had to reach out to him to get the meeting, and two of the members of our five-person committee then had that meeting. So there were some back and forth on that, but I just want to be very clear that he did not go, the owner did not go out of his way to, to meet with us. I've been asked to give the presentation that Stuart Bowden, who's also a member of our committee, was going to do, so I'm not sure if those slides can be put up. I did talk to the administrative assistant.
Let me just stop you right here.
Sure.
You get three minutes, or, sorry, you get five minutes.
I realize that.
Five minutes. You don't get anything added.
I know.
Okay.
You're taking away from my time right now, though.
I'll give you a couple of extra seconds.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. And this is a highly technical presentation, so in advance, I apologize if I don't get everything right. Mr. Bowden was the one that put it together. So if you can just go to the next slide, and I'll try to go through these very quickly. I think there's a rhetorical question on the first bullet about is the variance requested minor, and we would say that in substance, it is not. Is the proposal desirable for the appropriate development or use of the land or building? Again, we would say it is not on behalf of the community. And is the general intent and purpose of this city zoning bylaw and/or bylaw maintained? We would say not, and I would like to stress that it is currently a rooming house, and so the talk about this sort of missing middle adding more residents to the city, I don't think we're going to get any new residents going from a rooming house to a tear-down, which will actually take housing away for people for probably two years, the time it takes to build a new structure. The next slide, please. Mr. Bowden has talked about some incorrect property descriptions, and let's just jump ahead, because I know I'm going to run out of time. So minor variance slide. Okay. We know that the minor variance that came forward is slightly adjusted from the January proposal at two-hundred-and-seventy-nine meters squared, but it actually is a one-hundred-and-twenty-one percent increase in the living space because of the basements, the two bedrooms, I think, that are going to be in the basement. So that really hasn't been accounted for, and as Don pointed out, that will have negative adverse impacts on issues like safety and parking and so forth. The increase in square footage to allow more GFA to have space for the fourth unit in a single-family residential neighborhood, we think is a material change deviating from the original plan. It is designed as a hybrid structure to drive rental and leasing revenues. So very little has changed from January. The next slide shows the massing, which I think member Stinson was talking about to a certain degree. If you go beyond that one, please. Okay. So the original proposal, this is more or less to scale the best we could do with the drawing capabilities that we have. So the revised structure, as you can see on the right there, and I realize it's a little bit small, it really will create shadowing impacts on the neighbors, and it dominates the streetscape. The current structure is a lovely stone-fronted house, and we hope that the materials, if the committee approves it, will be adhered to, but we do have doubts about that. The next slide, please. Okay. So this one shows in the outline in red what the current height and scale of the property is, and that's the east elevation, the west elevation. So it does show that the roof line at the apex is about two-point-four meters higher than the current structure. Next slide, please. Again, difficult to read, but it just shows the footprint. Mr. Bowden wanted to get into mitigative measures in case the approval is provided by the committee, and what I would say off the top, this is my personal opinion, it might not be that of the neighbors, but there's a trend with respect to monster homes of ceiling heights being a lot taller than they were, let's say, in the nineteen fifties and sixties when this subdivision was put together. So the ceiling heights could be reduced to address the scale, and also to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, which is a very important feature. So we would like to turn down the minor variance request. We've listed a number of conditions. If you would move to the next slide, the last slide. I know I only have a few seconds left, but we would- I know I only have a few seconds left, but we would like to see an agreement between the developer and planning that all plans described be free of error, and there were some calculation slash, and it's too difficult to get into right now, but some of the numbers that were put forward by Mr. Ali didn't really align with the drawings. So there are some trees, and I know other members of the, of the community want to talk about that. But the bottom line, the developer, if this is approved, should be responsible for all costs of changes to municipal services and structures because we realize there will be a lot of demand on water, sewer, and other utility-type infrastructure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Please, we can't have clapping. Also, we can't have booing, so...
Equal opportunity.
Yeah. Other question on that last slide. Can staff bring it back up again? Because I wasn't sure. That last slide pretty much said no, but yes.
Yeah. I think the overwhelming desire is for a no, but we recognize that fourplexes are as of right. We know that with the committee, the definition of minor is somewhat subjective, so we're just trying to say that in the event that the approval for minor variance is provided, we would like to attach some conditions to it. But really, the overarching theme is no to this proposal.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted some clarification as to what that meant. All right, any questions? Mr. Stinson.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, sir, for your presentation. Well done. Internal ceiling heights for this structure, do you know what they are?
Unfortunately, I do not. I think Mr. Stinson has gone through that with a fine-tooth comb, but I would imagine they're going to be about two feet higher than they are currently in the building.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak to this matter? I have a couple of people that have signed up as being in the audience to speak. No? Okay.
Maybe a virtual.
Yeah. Okay.
Through the chair, we have...
I, I'm just getting clarification that, that the additional people in the audience that are listed are not here. All right, so we will go to the virtual. On a virtual, the first person I have listed is Anthony Cornacchia.
Through the chair. There are four people online, and we're going to start with Stuart Bowden, Bowden.
Okay.
They've been promoted to the panelist role, and they can turn on their mic and camera if they would like to.
Okay. All right, so Stuart Bowden. Good morning, sir. Would you identify yourself?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Stuart Bowden, 42 Regency Square.
Thank you. All right, you have five minutes.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity of speaking. I was uncertain I was going to be able to make it, and Mr. Mannahan basically went through my presentation. If you wouldn't mind, would you kindly put it back up to the last two slides? So pages nine and 10.
Just wait for staff to get those two slides up.
Thank you. Okay.
Which two slides?
No, if you go forward one, please. Last two. Final two. Yes, so the first mitigation slide.
Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you. We did have the opportunity to meet with the applicant. Myself and Mr. McDermott did. We went through the plans, and I think Mr. Afsel has accurately described events. We believe that the variance is not minor. We believe in looking in substance that it is major, taking into account the basement units. We also realize that this committee has its own mandate to deal, and should we be unsuccessful under the planners' and the institutes' act, it calls for people to look for mitigation. Having said that, if you were to review the plans, I believe diagram five, you'll notice that there is a living room with a bedroom off it and a bathroom. We are uncertain whether it will be single, not single-family, but an upper apartment unit or a rooming house. I think in addition, given the applicant was asking for additional, I believe they call it GFA, to demise to a fourth unit, we would ask that a nobody put on the planning file that demising the first and second floor be prohibited, given the general intent and the purpose of the original plan, not the official plan. There is shadowing, given the massing, on the adjacent properties, which should be taken into account, given the size of the structure and its proximity. Two meters is roughly six feet. In addition, there are window lights on the side of the property, and privacy to the adjacent neighbors could be a problem, dependent on who is occupying the home, and there's this suggestion that the window lights be basically translucent and opaque. Right? In these structures, basement apartments lead to the storage of garbage on the external side. That should be masked to the adjacent properties and perhaps fencing or some form of mechanism to hide the garbage would be good. Sitting on the side of the street is not, how can I put it the best thing? In addition, this neighborhood was designed as a single-family residential. The driveways are the size that handle basically two cars, maximum three. The street itself is about 20 feet wide. In talking with one of the fire captains in our neighborhood, who is a member of emergency services, a fire truck nor an ambulance could get through on the street if cars were parked opposite each other. And if this is an apartment facility, we are quite concerned about the number of cars in the area and the access of emergency services. Can you go to the next slide, please? Okay, I think Anthony has covered that we would look for an agreement as we would see with commercial properties, and in addition, we would not want to see a front lawn paved for parking. This would be decremental to the visual aesthetics of the structure, and we would perhaps encourage, given that Guildwood has known for its trees, that a landscape agreement be entered into, providing two 25-foot trees to soften any visual impacts. In addition, given the number of bathrooms that have been included in this structure, there will be a strain on municipal services, and that if the development proceed, regardless of whether the variance is accepted or whether he goes ahead by right to produce a similar structure, that the municipal, the developer be responsible for the cost. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. First of all, I guess I was remiss in not drawing the community's attention to the community planning staff report, and they have done a report for action which says if this application is approved, staff would recommend that the building be built substantially in accordance with the proposed drawings. That's the specific drawings that are in front of us today, and basically, the purpose of that is so that there is a degree of certainty with what is before the committee and what is approved. So there's a basement plan as ground floor plan, garage level, the ground floor plan the family level, and the second floor plan. The staff would recommend that the, if the applicant is, if the application is approved, that it be approved subject to only building in accordance with those drawings. If the applicant wants to change those drawings, he would have to come back to the committee for a change. Gives a level of certainty, but it also indicates that there are some concerns as what the community has identified as to how this, these lands could be developed. So I just want to bring forward to all of you that we have a staff report with recommendations. Okay, sir.
Madam Chair, if I might, may I might, Madam Chair? If I might add, I agree with you in terms of planning's report. What planning has not done is define the architectural finishes on the property. The first set of diagrams, which were presented in January, there were errors and inconsistencies on the finishes, and the neighborhood has concern that if the architectural finishes are not locked down, changes can be made. Our suggestion has been that the plans themselves, beyond the diagrams mentioned, be also added to the planner's report so that there's no confusion during permitting or construction.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right. Any comments from bidding members? Any questions? No? Okay. The next speaker is who? We have a second speaker online?
Through the chair, Anthony Cornacchia has been promoted, and he can unmute his mic and share his camera if he'd like.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Cordoghy, Cordogia? Cornac, Cornacchia. Excuse my pronunciation.
You are here.
Would you give your name and your address, and then you have five minutes, sir.
My name is Anthony Cornacchia, 58 Regency Square, Toronto. My presentation on slide two, my presentation summarizes the arguments I presented in my comprehensive opposition letter. I am well-qualified to speak on planning matters, and my submission should be given significant weight by the committee. I have adjudicated numerous minor variance applications while a member of the Ontario Land Tribunal, and I am an Ontario lawyer. I am very knowledgeable in the field of land use, planning, Ontario land use policies, and planning law generally. I have resided on Regency Square for over 35 years and know the Guildwood community well. Slide four, please. My submission is that the application should not be authorized for 59's Regency Square since it fails to meet the requirements of section 45 of the Planning Act. My presentation will review the requested variance, review why the variance fails to meet the four-part test under the Planning Act, and conclude with my recommendations. Wish to emphasize that if the application fails one element of the four-part test in your view, it fails outright. So moving on to the next slide, the requested variance for 59 Regency Square is the maximum permitted floor space index, and the numerical value represents 15.23% increase over the maximum permitted floor space index. Next slide, please. Okay. The oversized structure that will result if the variance is allowed fails to maintain the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. Floor space index measures if a building is oversized for the lot and whether there will be sufficient open space for the lot. If the application is authorized, an oversized building will be crammed into a small lot. It is far too small for the lot and is not consistent with open space in the area. So moving on to the next slide. The oversized structure is a poor fit and fails to maintain the intent and purpose of the official plan. The official plan speaks to neighborhood character, and the, the, the proposal needs to fit the physical character of the neighborhood. An oversized lot or an oversized building crammed into a small lot does not fit the physical character of the neighborhood. There's a lot of open space between adjacent properties, and such a structure crammed into a lot does not fit. The oversized structure will dwarf the neighboring homes, representing a bad fit. Moving on to the next slide. Okay, so the variance is not minor and is not desirable and results in numerous unacceptable adverse impacts from a planning point of view. We've talked about the oversized structure for the lot. We've talked about the bad neighborhood fit and the failure to maintain the intended purpose of both the bylaw and the official plan. There are shadowing and overlooked and privacy adverse impacts that I would like to cover and drainage impacts. I note that the applicant's planner did not bother dealing with the adverse impacts to the, to the neighborhood in his cover letter, and his report does not represent a comprehensive examination of the planning matters. There is no evidence that he...
Can you wrap up, sir?
Yes. Okay, so there's lots of adverse impacts in terms of shattering, overlooking, and loss of privacy. I wish to note that at 61 Regency Square, there is a sunroom, and there will be a significant loss of privacy. At 27, there's a pool, and there will be serious overlooked issues there. There are other adverse impacts that are covered in my, in my submission. And finally, there are drainage issues. There are going to be significant drainage issues because the property sits at a higher level than neighboring properties. So my recommended course of action for the committee is to refuse to authorize the application. It does not comply with the Planning Act. It fails to meet all four elements of the test.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. We have a couple of questions. Yes, Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I would like to remind the speaker that the percentage he has quoted 15.23% is not correct. It is less.
What is it? Sorry, that's what I calculated.
Did you, did you do a calculation? Okay, go ahead.
Madam Chair, it should be around 13%, not 15%.
So that's the increase is 13% increase over what is permitted.
He's saying more.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm just clarifying that, that statement. Okay, any other questions? All right, that's for Mr. Cornacchia. The next speaker?
Mr. Cornacchia? Yes, and even if it were 13%, which I dispute, that is significant, and all of my analysis still applies.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. We're moving on to the next speaker. Who do I have as the next speaker?
Through the chair, Scott McDermid has been promoted and he can turn on his microphone. On my side, I don't see that Scott has a microphone plugged in. So Scott, if you can hear me, could you try and unplug and plug back in the device you're using to speak through?
Okay, Scott McDermid?
Through the chair, I also have a call-in number that matches his number. I'll unmute that and see if that's, if that'll work. Just give me a sec.
Okay, of the people listed, we've spoken to Mr. Cornacchetti. We've spoken to Mr. Boden.
Okay, Scott, I just unmuted your call-in user ID. If you could try and speak to see if this is the correct one? This is Scott, Scott McDermid.
Oh, I'm sorry. We've already spoken to Mr. Boden. Scott McDermid? Hello, is that Mr. McDermid?
Yes, it is. Can you hear me?
Yes, good. All right. Give us your name and your address and you have five minutes to speak.
Scott McDermid, seventy Regency Square.
Thank you.
I have, hello, thank you for allowing me to speak. Sorry about the problem with the audio. I'd just like to speak about some of the problems that I see with this property regarding the size of it and the lack of drainage as far as the height compared to the other neighbor's homes. I'm concerned that the elderly couples that live on each side of it, Binda and Bud, that there could be basement planning problems for them because they are both lower than the, the plans for the new build. I'd also like to, everybody talks about the inside of the home, how many rooms, how many bathrooms. There's nothing really spoken through the planning committee about what the house is going to look like and how it's going to fit into our community. So I would like to propose that the plans that are submitted, if they are going to go ahead with it in the way that they are, that they do stipulate that they will use stucco, that they will use stone and things like that on the outside of the house. Otherwise, because of our previous dealings with the owners, we find that they don't exactly tell us, say what was actually said. There's also a concern with the size of the windows on either side of the house, which is overlooking the neighbors. And there is more window glass on each side than the bylaws permit. And I was just thinking that if they, the head with building that, that to try to give the neighbors a little bit more privacy, if some of the windows could have the glazed or, or so that they can't see through it, but they can still see light inside. Understand it's important for that to happen. I would like to also just say that we are very loving and respected our neighbors in our community and we hope that we all do respect our neighborhoods in our communities that we, and that's all my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? Oh, sorry, any questions for the speaker? No questions? Okay, we should have one more speaker. Next, through, and we, and the last speaker I have listed is Jason.
Through the chair, Jason has been promoted and he can turn on his mic. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker, for allowing me to speak today. I appreciate the opportunity. As you can see from many of the residents speaking today and those that actually submitted depositions, there's a strong, strong apprehension to this development.
Before we got started, I need your name and address for our records.
My name is Jason Tetro. I live at thirty-two nothing.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So as I was saying, you know, you can see there's a very strong opposition to this development. My perspective from, about this development is slightly different from those that have been giving presentations so far. My perspective is really on what happens to this project after it is built. So I've been a member of the Guildwood community for over thirty-six years. There's been a lot of great changes to the community. However, most recently, there's been some negative changes to the community, which is mostly pertaining around this issue, which is these, you know, developments of multi-residential properties within a single-family development, being the Guildwood. That said, you know, my position is that I strongly oppose this development. My position is not from a NIMBY point of view, but rather from a personal experience point of view. Guildwood is a single-family dwelling community and we don't really have the infrastructure to support these multi-residential properties, particularly examples like this, where we have the proposal of a triplex. You know, I am a direct neighbor to three, to two current triplexes that were originally come to committee. Actually, one of them did not come to committee, one of them did not have permits, but were presented as triplexes, but unfortunately have turned into rooming houses. So I have a direct relationship with a project like this in our community, which there are several of. And I can comment that I have a significant amount of concerns with what's going to happen to this project in the future. I am suspect to that the developer, being an owner-occupier in this case, my experience has shown in these types of developments in our community that the developers develop the property, do not own or occupy the property. And that's a significant difference. So as, as many of the residents have communicated with you today, that this is a very strong community, it's a single-family community, and it's not really represented in terms of multifamily, commercial community. In my experience, you know, landlords like this don't have the infrastructure to support the amount of cars that are, that come with these types of projects. I can speak to my experience in my particular situation where the landlord in both cases and in both properties beside me have widened their driveways without permits and have actually physically denoted parking spaces on the property. So the tenants know exactly where to park, right? Not only that, but on the actual street. So there's that issue. There's issues with, with the tenancy in these community, in these situations where we have typically have transient tenancies. So these units are either, you know, short-term lease, short-term rental, student housing, maybe even Airbnb. And that comes with a significant amount of, of issues as it relates to, you know, how these individuals live in these units, the garbage that gets created. I can, I can speak personally about my situation with, with the, with the rooming houses that I have next door to me that were triplexes originally, where landlords don't supply proper garbage removal processes, so garbage overflows. I've had to personally undertake the expense of extermination and pest control because of the rats and, and other vermin that come with these properties that are beside me. Typically, these residents, you know, they don't have sufficient areas to, to, you know, cook or, or live. Therefore, we have a lot of, you know, we have a lot of Uber deliveries at all hours of the evening. So my concerns, this project is, again, is, is more directed towards a future, right? Does this project end up being a fourplex, but it end up being a triplex, non-owner occupant? Does the landlord take responsibility for their property? My two neighbors, the landlord does not maintain their, does not mow the lawn, does not shovel the driveway, you know, does not pick up the garbage. I can say that I've been here, like I said, thirty-six years, never picked up garbage in, in the Guildwood community ever in my life up until when these projects became triplexes slash rooming house. I constantly pick up garbage on my property now because garbage is overflowing with my neighbors next door. So my position is clear that I, I vehemently, you know, do not support a triplex here. Amongst the reasons other, that the other applicants have suggested, and not only does it's too, too large for the community, not only does this, does not fit into the community, you know, there's other issues that they've, that they've brought up, which I think are all valid points, but I think my concern really is what happens here in the future based on my experience. And, and to answer a question, actually, it was brought up by one of the panel members, you know, what was the difference between the subject property and I think it was number sixty-one the gentleman referred to? There's a significant difference. The other property that, that is built on, on Regency is a purpose-built residential single-family dwelling, not a triplex. And that property clearly fits into the community in terms of its design, its utility, and its architecture.
Okay, sir, that is your five minutes. Thank you very much for your comments. Any questions? Yes, Mr.?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, sir, for addressing my question. Just for the record, it was number sixty-five, but I do commend you for your clarity in that response because it helped me a lot. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the speaker? Okay, we're at the end of all the speakers. No other speakers? Okay. All right, back to the applicant. Sir, you have five minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, madam. I have listened to all these opponents and their concerns. Just I need to wind up the discussion about the floor space index. The proposed floor area has three-twenty-one point five and if I divided by six-forty-three, which is the lot area, the figure comes point five zero. And the allowed is two-seventy-nine square meter and if I divided by the six-forty-three, that becomes point four-three. The difference between point four-three and point five is point zero-seven. This is the increase in the floor space index. And this is the correct way of interpreting the floor area with respect to the lot. And they comparing the increase with respect to the allowed floor area is not a true representative of floor space index. This is minor thing, in my opinion. There are cases where committee of adjustment recently approved variances. I have a polite quote, one is in front of the committee of adjustment, this is eighty-seven, Cliff Crest Drive, application was A zero-zero-four-five, Ablay Twenty-One SC, the allowed floor space index was point four and the approved by the committee was point five-one. Similarly, there was another case for twenty-five, Niceon Avenue, and the allowed floor space index was point five and the committee approved point six-four-two. So the, these two decisions shows that the increase in the floor space index, which committee normally allows, is quite larger than what we are requesting, point zero-seven. And the other thing is that some of the people said that they do not approve and they do not like triplex building here. The zoning bylaw, original zoning bylaw allows triplex in RDA zone as well as the new zoning bylaw about triplex, fourplex. This also allows triplex, fourplex in RDA zone. So also, the, the, at the original zoning bylaw, the floor space index was not limited, but however, due to the exception fourteen eighty-two, probably eighty-two or eighty-four, the, the, the floor placement index was restricted. But, but the zoning bylaw, zero-four-seven-four, for the triplex, it says that there is no bar on the floor space index in case of triplex building. So there are some other questions about the, there is less space for open space. I would request that still seventy percent of the lot is open, because the lot coverage we are using is point three, point three, and that there is seventy percent of the lot is open. Also regarding drainage, we are seeing that we will get a drainage, drainage plan certified by a professional engineer that would be submitted during the application stage. Also, there were some, some questions about the privacy. We support the idea to provide a high fence on the, on the property line on both neighbors' side. Also, we also support the idea of using some opaque windows on the side of the property. Regarding, we will enforce the, the recommendation of urban forestry. We will apply to danger or the sanitary and we will provide the more trees on the side. So regarding the infrastructure development, this process is, is on right now. City is, city is trying to widen these, these states, providing new infrastructures and transportation. There are transportation and highway, road development project in phases running on now. So in my opinion, only we need one variance, that way, yeah, I'm winding up, only one variance and that variance is to allow us point zero-seven increase in the floor space index. The, the percentage figure fifteen point five is not correct indicative of what we are requesting. This is all, thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. I have a question.
Can you tell me, are you, on the bathrooms, are you putting opaque or translucent glass? That's my first question. And secondly, I believe one of the floors is an eleven-foot ceiling. Was any thought given after the deferral last time to reducing the height, to kind of minimize the, the look of the massing? Those are my two questions.
Okay.
Regarding my answer?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, my, my answer is that any idea regarding the, the reduce, regarding addressing the privacy issue, we will welcome. We can use opaque glass in the washroom or we can use translucent glasses in the washroom. Regarding the height, the total height of the building is eight point, probably eight point eight-four meter and this is less than ten meter allowed height in case of triplex. Allowed in the original zoning bylaw as well as allowed in the triplex or fourplex bylaws, zero-four-seven-two.
No, I recognize, but, but...
We have a rocky height.
But I was asking just because of the massing. I, I recognize there is no variances for setbacks or height, length, depth, you know, all you're here for is the FSI. But given the fact that the massing of this structure looks, you know, larger, the ceiling contributes the height, if you reduced it a bit, it could make, minimize the maxing, the massing look from the street a little bit? That's why I'm asking. So I understand you're within the height limit.
So we, we can, right now, we are suggesting eleven feet height for the ground floor and I cannot see what height for the second floor. So we can reduce the height of the ground floor one foot from the height which I have, I have provided here.
Okay. So, you're willing to reduce the eleven-feet height to ten feet? Is that what you're saying?
To ten.
Okay. So, if an approval were granted and a condition for that was put in, you would be okay with that, as well as the opaque windows for the bathrooms, correct?
Yes, madam.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Khan had.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, I will just make a statement that one of the speakers earlier in the audience has brought up a concern of windows. And also, I was thinking that privacy of every individual should be respected. So, windows having translucent type of windows, would you consider that being a good neighbor?
I think he's already agreed to opaque windows.
Definitely, we will consider that.
Further to that, we're just for the bathrooms. I mean, speaking as somebody, if you were living in a house, I'm not sure you'd want all your windows to be opaque glass, right? So, it's specific to bathrooms only, Mr. Khan, correct? Okay.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Muigle, for those answers and points. I see actually quite a bit of cooperation to some degree, although you might not think you see it today. I see an applicant that has made revisions already, and he's now talking about revisions again. I've seen a community that's come before us and spoken very eloquently and clearly to us, believe me, we've heard you, and you're concerned about outside facades, you're concerned about mass and F S I size, but you've also acknowledged, if I heard you clearly, a transparency that there are triplexes in the community. There are some homes that have been developed a little bit larger. So, based on what Committee Member Omen said, and also Committee Member Khan, I'm of the mind right now that I would wonder if we could see some changes or something altered that would maybe bring this matter back before committee again if the applicant was willing. And the committee may be consulted a bit more, or sorry, the community, pardon me. I would strongly recommend that to the applicant, because I think you're very close here, very close indeed, but it's going to take a little effort on both sides. So, thank you for hearing me out.
Applicant? So, just further to Mr. Stinson's question, to the applicant, would you be willing to have a deferral, to make some further modifications in terms of reducing the ceiling and anything else that could sort of minimize impact on the community?
This is second time, I am, we are trying to get this approval. We are open to make some changes in the envelope, but we need to know what changes we need, we have to bring in, because it will be very difficult for me, and it is eating of my resources, part of the budget of the project I have, to make changes again and again. So, if committee set some targets for me, so I can revise the drawing, and I can send to the committee, so I go to get it. Our committee can impose some condition on that, like the height we have discussed, and I can reduce the ceiling height of the ground floor from eleven feet two. That's it, and I can use suitable glass in the washroom to protect the privacy. And if there are any other other thing which committee can guide me, I would welcome that, but please give me this approval with conditions so that I, all these things would be looked into and approved by the plan and building department.
The committee's, you know, it's sort of not up to us to negotiate here on the floor or to set conditions for you. And I also want to clarify that I was, staff has corrected me in terms of putting on the reduced ceiling and the bathrooms, the opaque glass as a condition, that we can't do that because it involves revising drawings and whatnot, which we don't have. However, if, you know, we can put it in as for the record for you as an undertaking, that you agreed to do that.
Okay. I would like to speak to this matter a bit. I recognize that this is an application, and the only variance that we have in front of us is overall size. So, it's an application for size. In terms of setbacks, he meets the standards. In terms of rear yard, he meets the standards. In terms of the amount of landscaping, he meets the standards. But the variances aren't just about size. The variances, we have to consider character, we have to consider how does it fit into the community? Is it appropriate to the community? And I'm having some difficulty with this one. I think my major difficulty is that what we really have is three dwelling units. Two stories are one dwelling unit with five bedrooms, and the basement is two very small units, one bedroom each. I know that we are trying to get more housing into Toronto and into the particular areas, but I'm not sure that this is a good example. I'm having problems with the very small, less than five-hundred-square-foot basement apartments, which are not part of the gross floor area, because we don't consider basements of its gross floor area. But we're going to have at least three families here, and they're going to be widely disparate, some in one bedroom, five-hundred square feet, and the rest in over three-hundred square meters. I'm mixing my square feet and square meters. So, I'm having some difficulty with this. I also, I went out and drove around Regency Square. I don't have a problem with the height. There is one or two other buildings out there that are two stories, and he's meeting the height requirements. This area does not have curbs. It's got kind of a rolling curb. And when I was out there, and I was out there at five o'clock at night, so it was a reasonable time of night, I didn't see a problem of parking on the street. But I do know from others that once you start to get dwelling units with three units in it, parking becomes an issue. So, I'm having some difficulty with this. I would prefer, as my colleague has suggested, that the applicant go back, meet with representatives of the community, and possibly the councillor, and see if you can come up with something a little better. Now, that would be my preference. So, committee, where are we?
Madam Chair, I too am struggling with this one. However, you know, multi-units are permitted in neighborhoods now, so that's not something that we should be looking at, because it's a permitted thing. I am very sympathetic to the issues brought up by the community, but we're looking at an F S I variance here. There's no setback variance, there's no height variance, and to your point, you know, there's the split, the semi-split houses, and then there's another one right next door that's a very different, very different architecture also. I think the question is, you know, can it be improved in terms of fitting in with the character of the neighborhood? I would say probably there is some room for improvement if the applicant is willing. You know, I'm not totally opposed to a deferral, although I will say it's been deferred once. We don't like to defer things a second time. So, I'm, those are my comments. And as I said earlier, I would, if this does go ahead, like to have the for-the-record comments that I mentioned earlier for the ceiling height reduction and the opaque glass on the bathrooms. And I also want to add that I know a lot of things were raised, such as drainage, architecture, grading, you know, where the garbage is going to be stored. Those are things that this committee does not deal with, that is dealt with through the building process, so I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that.
Okay. Mr. Stinson.
The phrase "a house divided" comes to mind. This is going to be an interesting vote, and I see it both ways. I see that, for me, we have experts behind us in all the various Toronto departments, and they are the experts, and they inform this committee. But I also know why this committee's here. In addition to listening to experts, it's to listen to the community. So, on this one, I'm not going to approve it. I'm going to hope that it goes back to the drawing board for two reasons. One is, the applicant, and I hope you're all noting this, has been gracious enough to take it back to the drawing board to some degree. And two, you've come here, like I said earlier, with some transparency and a reality that says change does happen in communities. You're just asking if I've heard today correctly, some adjustments, and this applicant seems to be willing to do it. So, for the sake of saving time, I don't want to rush that, because I think sometimes putting it over is worth it if it's for the right reasons at the right time, and this is that time for me. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. Are we ready for a motion? Mr. Stinson.
Thank you, Chair. I would move that we defer this application to the next earliest availability, or as the city sees fit. And I would ask that, for all the reasons cited, that's, or why, I would like this deferral.
Okay. So, you are.
Through the Chair. Through the Chair.
Sign or die?
Through the Chair. Can I, you may wish to confirm if the applicant wish, is okay with deferring the application, or if they wish to have a decision at today's hearing?
Okay. I will do that. As I understand it, the motion on the floor at the moment is defer, sign or die, to allow the applicant to meet with the community and talk about some of the items, the opaque glass, the privacy, deal with how it fits into the community a bit better, the loss of privacy, the physical character of the community, and generally have an opportunity to address some of the concerns that are not the technical concerns that we can address, but the concerns that the community can address in how this application proceeds. So, we have a deferral. The applicant has the right to a decision unless he is willing to agree to a deferral. Sir, are you willing to agree to a deferral?
Yes, madam. I agree to have a deferral, but I am nervous if we cannot meet all of the environmental wishes of the neighbors. So, we will definitely try to meet some of their recommendation, but the floor space index is very minor, point zero-seven, that's not much, because I, as I quoted, there are instances where committee approved much bigger value of variance, you got the floor space index. You got the floor space index.
Sir, I think you have said that you're agreeable to the deferral, that you will meet with the community. We will have to defer you, sign or die, because we can't set a date at this stage. But once you've had your meeting with the community and have some further comments, if you would inform staff that you would like to have this application back on the agenda, we'd be pleased to hear from you again. Okay.
Okay. Is that motion still on the floor, then?
The motion is still on the floor.
Okay, Madam Chair. I will second the motion to defer the application with the understanding that the applicant holds a meeting with the community as soon as possible, and that there is hopefully going to be some give and take on both sides here, keeping in mind we're dealing with one variance only, and that the applicant, before he meets, makes any reduction to the ceiling height or any other thing that can mitigate sort of the look of the massing from the street, and also maybe include the opaque glass somewhere on his plans. And, yeah, and I think that hopefully we'll come back and we won't have a room full of people objecting. I think that's what we're really hoping for with this deferral. So, the sooner you get all that together and hopefully have a contact for the neighborhood and have the meeting, then you can come back to us. So, thank you for agreeing to the deferral, but that's, so I'm seconding it with all that.
Okay. I have a motion for deferral from Mr. Stinson, seconded by Ms. O'Mahm, in agreement with the applicant. All those in favor of deferral, that motion carries for deferral. Thank you very much to the community. It is up to the applicant to contact you, although I think you've already had some contacts with the applicant, so you need to reach out to. And I suggest that you also reach out to your councillor, just to keep him part of the loop. You had a lot of questions that we can't answer, but he would be able to answer. I'm talking about maintenance, I'm talking about drainage, I'm talking about landscaping, I'm talking about what is happening in your community, and that would be helpful. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. I am going, yes, yeah. I am going to suggest, actually, a half an hour break. Okay? Okay. We've got the motion. We've got the motion.
Don't.
I feel normal right now.
Yeah.
I did watch time to time.
I was on this, yes.
I've been following guys. See him here a lot.
Yeah.
Right.
It's a whole area.
Back here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to check.
Yep, the whole design. I can make sure that we have.
Much appreciated.
Yeah.
Which one?
The one in the lower?
Yeah.
We're here.
So members, can everybody turn on their mics and their video, their cameras on please? And we could start? Testing.
We're ready? Okay, good afternoon. This is the continuation of the committee of adjustment for the city of Scarborough. Since it's a continuation, I'm not going to read all the comments that I did at the introduction. So we're going to go to item number five, which is thirty-five Terra Avenue. And the purpose of this application is to convert. The application is to construct a covered deck in the rear yard. It was previously deferred. Are you the applicant? Can I have your name and address, please?
Good afternoon, committee members. My name is Gregory with the last name Fiet, F-I-E-T. And I am representing the owner of the property at thirty-five Avenue in Scarborough.
Okay, you represent the owners, do you?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right. The variance you have before us is a, is a two-part. The first part is maximum lot coverage thirty-four point three four percent. Proposed lot coverage is forty-one point seven, point, point seven two three percent.
That's correct.
That is an error, unfortunately. The error is that your maximum permitted coverage is by a variance that got approved. But when we're talking about a variance to what, to the property, we have to go back to the original. The original, in this case, is thirty-three percent lot coverage.
Yep.
So you could build thirty-four, but you can't make any changes. So what your proposal should read is that your proposal still is forty-one point seven two three percent. But the permitted is thirty-three percent. It's a technicality for committee's sake. We can't vary a variance. It's a fancy little word that says, don't do that. So are you willing to change the wording here to your proposal, lot coverage is still forty-one point seven two three, but the original is thirty-three percent?
Yes, I am.
Okay with that?
I am okay with this.
Good. Then we can proceed with this variance as amended.
Yep.
Is that the correct terminology we would be using here?
Through the chair, that is correct. Just give me a moment. I'll, I'll, what's, since the owner is submitting an amended application to reflect this, I will put this on the screen and this will be, should the committee decide to approve the application today, it'll be reflected in the decision. Give me one moment.
Okay. So we need to do our bit for a minute.
Thank you so much. Madam Speaker.
While we're waiting, I see we have people.
Through the chair, it's done.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
No more waiting. All right, so we have an application before us for a proposed lot coverage of forty-one point seven two three percent, whereas the permitted, according to the existing zoning bylaw, is thirty-three percent. And we note that that has been amended through another variance to thirty-four point three four percent. There's a second variance here for, a second variance request for a minimum rear yard setback, where the, for ancillary building, the requirement is zero point three meters and the proposal is zero point two three meters. Okay. I'm not sure that you need to add anything to this, but you have an opportunity. Are you okay?
I'm agreed so far with what we have discussed.
You're okay. All right. Okay. All right. Committee members, do you understand what we were doing and why? Okay, so, committee members?
Through the chair, you may wish to ask if there's anybody in the audience who wishes to speak.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application for thirty-five Terra Avenue? No? Okay. And we have no one online. All right, which is the wish of committee?
Are you ready for a motion?
Yep.
Okay, Madam Chair, I think that this application is minor. Minor, it meets the four tests. There is parkland behind it, so it doesn't impact anything in the back. So with that, I would move approval of the application as amended with variance number one to read maximum permitted lot coverage is thirty-three percent. And the proposed is forty-one point seven two three, which doesn't change. So that's my motion.
Okay. I have a seconder. Mr. Khan?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay, that motion is carried. You're now approved.
Thank you, committee members. May I leave?
Pardon?
May I leave now, or?
You can leave.
Yeah, I have someone to take care of. I'm very sorry.
Yeah, no, you got approved.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam.
We'll move on to item number seven. Well, I'm getting organized. In the audience. Anyone here for Robertsfield Crescent? Landry? Barbados? No. Craig Lee? Beckhill? I should actually ask you what you are here for, but we'll continue. Midland Avenue? You're here for Midland Avenue. Are you the applicant? Okay. Martindale? No. Rensburg? No. Okay, and Guildwood Parkway?
Did you say Martindale?
Uh, yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it correctly. Can I come down?
No, no, I'm just.
Okay, no problem.
I'm just checking. So you're here for Martindale? Okay. When there's only three of you and we've got ten applications, it's a lot easier to find out which three are in the audience. So we'll go back to. Number seven, which is eleven Robertsfield Crescent in Maryville. The purpose is to build a two-story detached dwelling. And it has a number of. It has a number of variances. Lot coverage, forty-eight percent, building length, depth, height, wall height, driveway width, flange yard setback, rear yard setback, front yard. The staff have recommended refusal in that the application is not minor in terms of setbacks. And the staff have recommended refusal to three of the items. Lot coverage, building length, depth, and height. I believe the applicant has agreed to those changes. Let's get the applicant here and check with him.
Through, through the chair, I think that's, this, this is, item seven is, is.
I can next state with another one?
Item seven is a refusal from community planning. There is no amended application with this. With this application.
Okay. Okay. Is the applicant online? Okay.
Yes.
Madam, would you please give your name and your address, and then you have five minutes to make a presentation.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Sabrina Fros and the property address is eleven Robertsfield Crescent. I'm representing my client today, who has lived in this property for more than twenty years and is now in need of two garages and additional space in his house. The scope for this project was addition of two garages and a second story on top of the existing one. If we look at the slide, and I'm going to talk about the variances that has been refused by the company, like number seven, which is the driveway, we agree that we can, we can make some changes to that and, yeah, update that. But with the main concern the committee had with the setbacks and the length and breadth, length and depth of the building is coming as variance because when you look at the site, you'll see that the only place we have to accommodate the two garages is on the right side of the existing building. If we place it on the left side or on the side, which is the front of the building, existing building, both will be variances anyway. So the right side of the building, existing building, and which is the rear of the lot, would be the, we found the best suitable location to place the two garages, keeping the existing building intact and not demolishing it. Now, so, and the rest of the variances, we, so for this, placing these garages on the right side of the property brought us to the variance of building, building length and building depth and rear yard setback, which came more. The other variances, building height and the rest of the variances, which are within height and wall height and floor space, we believe they are minor in nature and we would request the committee to approve those because we have neighborhood houses in the neighborhood with the similar footprint, lot coverage and building heights. And also, I'd like to give an example of a house which is only one minute distance from the lot. We're talking about it seventy-seven Prince Way Drive, which is a corner plot, just like ours, and they have renovated with two garages and the second story. And we have also spoken with our neighbors and they have no objection with this proposal and they are in agreement with us that if this design is built, it will actually add value to the neighborhood. So we sincerely hope that the committee agrees and that the proposal required by my client and approve the proposal. Thank you.
Any questions to the applicant? Yes, Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, I would like to ask the applicant or the architect. Very, there are nine variances and most of them are.
Yes.
Different than the normal. My concern is the variance number one, FCI. It is sixty-one percent high. How can I compromise?
Uh, sir, we wanted to keep the existing building as it is and add a garage on the side. So we have only added, the addition is only the amount that is required to place two garages. Uh, we have not proposed any demolition to the existing structure or wall of the existing house that he resides in. So that is also because of the financial constraints of demolishing the existing. So that is one of the reasons it is coming to the floor space index you're talk, we are talking about.
This percentage is not within the range of compromise or understanding or accommodative, accommodation. So for me, this is unacceptable.
Yes.
Hi, I have a question. The plans at the top, it says addition and renovation to an existing house. Yet the purpose is to demolish and to rebuild a new house. So which are you doing? I thought you just said you're adding a garage, so are you?
Actually, we.
So are you?
Yes, yes. We, we are, it is actually.
Are you keeping the existing foundation then?
Please go ahead.
No, yeah, are you keeping the existing foundation?
Yes.
So, so you're, you're saying that what you're building is going to be the exact same foundation, except you're adding a garage to the side and you're going up higher? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes, exactly.
So the footprint, the footprint.
It is an addition and renovation.
Right, so the footprint doesn't change, other than the garage?
The existing building footprint doesn't change, other than the garage, the addition. Even the foundation, we are not touching the existing foundation and anything.
So.
We submitted the application as an addition and renovation, not as a demolition. I also talked to the spoke email, the committee, when they served us the notice writing that it's a demolition. We went back and forth with them with emails saying that we proposed an addition and renovation, not demolishing the existing building or its foundation or its main walls. And we were replied back saying that they spoke internally with their managers and they seem, see, they see it as a demolition. I, I, I don't know any further about it, but from our perspective, it is an addition. We are not touching the existing building. We are not touching the existing foundation. Even the existing walls are staying. We are only changing, we, we propose to only change the first, like the, keeping the walls, the outside front materials to match with the new addition.
So you're adding a second story. So just to staff, is the purpose correct then? Because it says to construct a new two-story detached dwelling. If they're building only a second story on top and adding a garage, should that not be reflected in the purpose?
Through the chair, there were discussions internally on this and from the, from the ground up, it's a new house.
Okay, so even...
And for members of the public, we need to put this in as plain language as possible. What the... And the nuance about foundations and all that other stuff, that's really, is it a new build or not, right? And I guess really, from the ground up, it is.
Okay, I only asked...
So we're doing... It's a very... I understand the nuance and I understand what the applicant is indicating, right? From a building standpoint, yes. From a building code standpoint, yes. But from a... From a neighbor's standpoint and from a plain language standpoint, this is what...
So even though the walls are remaining?
They're not, but they're not remaining, though.
Oh, okay.
Like above ground.
Okay, so...
Yeah, remaining, uh...
It's a new construction above ground.
Well, I don't want to get into a debate, but I just heard the applicant say the walls are staying, which is why I thought it was an addition. But whatever, staff...
It's an addition... I guess it's an addition to the foundation, right?
Okay, I don't...
Yeah. I'm just looking at the...
I want to clarify, the walls are... We will only change the tiles, wall tiles, to match the new tiles, the exterior tiles.
Okay. I am looking at the building elevation. And this building elevation does not look like anything that is existing. So maybe we do have the basement foundation is the same, but everything else is different.
Yeah, I agree. Looking at the elevations, you're right. It doesn't look like anything like the bungalow. I just go with what the agent or the applicant just said. That's why I was asking, because she says... Anyway, it's a moot point. The purpose is correct according to staff, so...
Well, the purpose may be correct. Staff are also recommending refusal.
I know that.
Yeah. Okay, David?
Thank you, Chair. In fact, I was going over these plans quite diligently and I found them somewhat, not to my satisfaction as somebody on the committee. The plans are there, but I found them lacking in a lot of depth and pers...
Can you...
Can you let me finish, please? Thank you. I found them lacking in the detail that I'm used to getting in this committee. The other problem I'm having is, we've heard these speakers speak and I appreciate that they've said their piece on this moment. But then there's some confusion with one of the committee members trying to discuss it with the staff, which is good. But again, I'm left with this fog. And the fog concerns me because usually when I'm making decisions, I'm very clear on what's happening. And I'm not there on this file right now. And I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
Okay, we need to know exactly what we are dealing with in the public notice. And I think maybe the easiest thing is to go back to the public notice. And if the public notice is incorrect, then we have a choice to either defer the application or refuse the application with the items that we have difficulty with. So the purpose is to demolish the existing and to construct a new two-story detached dwelling. Having said that, our variance is to permit a maximum floor area of three hundred meters squared. So that's not exactly the same as the existing building. Our lot coverage is forty-eight point one-nine percent. The permitted is thirty-three. So again, we're not into the same. Your building length is twenty-two point seven-one meters and the depth is twenty-five meters. In both cases, that is not the same as what exists. So I'm a little bit confused as to what they're proposing. We've got a building height that is different. And then we have a driveway width.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think, like, some of the things you just illustrated kind of reinforces what staff said earlier, that they had a lot of dialogue, but that the purpose is in fact correct, that it is a new build. And with all the things you just mentioned, I think it speaks to the fact it's a new build and it's not a renovation as stated on the top of their plans. So I believe Colin has something to add?
Yes.
Through the chair. This also, you can take a look at the public hearing notice. This went through a zoning review. It's been vetted by Toronto Buildings. The variances are correct. The purpose is correct. So this can be heard today.
Okay. So... So this has had all the appropriate vetting that it should have and went through Toronto Building, which provides a good overall understanding of this. And in spite of all of that, we have these applications. And then we have staff report, which is recommending refusal of the coverage, building length, building depth, and building height.
Through the chair, that's... This is item... This is item number seven.
Yes.
I'm going to share the screen with the staff report from community planning.
Have I got the wrong report?
Madam Chair, if I may, I think what you're thinking was is the next item, which had comments from community planning on three conditions. But this is item number seven, which is not...
Okay, well, let's read the community planning report. Report recommendations. Planning staff recommends the committee adjustment refuse minor variance application. Is that no longer... That's correct. Okay, variances are not minor, particularly in terms of setbacks to neighboring properties, building footprint, and size. It's not characteristic of the surrounding area. City planning has spoken with the applicant about these concerns. City planning recommends refusal. Okay, so... I guess, committee, we have a decision to be made. Maybe a fairly simple one, actually.
Well, I have some comments. There's also forestry. They talk about denial of a removal of a willow tree. So that's also been flagged. Yeah, I think that it would have been in the applicant's best interest to have continued dialogue with city planning. You know, we don't often see refusal reports. So I think in this case, I would be inclined to support the planning recommendation and refuse the application because it is out of character. It is too large. And so that's where I'm at with this one, Madam Chair. That's my position. I won't be supporting it.
Thank you. I'm going to break from the rules a bit and ask the applicant whether the applicant is wanting a decision today, hearing our comments today, or whether the applicant wishes to have a deferral for further discussion with the planning department.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak again. We would like the opportunity to get it deferred and sort it out. But then again, we will come back again with minimizing some of the variances. But I do have one thing, if I'm allowed to, concern, speak on behalf of my client. He is unwilling to... If he is unwilling to demolish his existing house. I know, from our normal viewer's perspective, this might seem like a new construction. But he is willing to keep his residence as it is right now, structurally, and then add the garage. So given the site size and the way the site is, if we add the garage on the side, I will then again have these building length, building depth, and rear yard setback variance, these two variances. The others, with the building height and the driveway, we will change that and come back.
Okay.
But if we have this...
I'm going to interrupt you here because I don't want to get into a discussion of what you'll do and what you won't do and what changes you'll make and what changes you won't make. So very simple. Are you willing to defer this application for further discussion with staff? Or do you want us to make a decision today and the indication is fairly clear, we would refuse the application? Your choice.
I'll defer, Madam, please.
You will do what? You will defer?
I'll defer. We would request that.
All right. So I have a motion...
Okay, no, I actually... I'm not going to support a deferral on this one. From my perspective, it was deferred three months ago in June for them to have discussions with planning. You know, three months have taken place. And a decision was made by the applicant and the owner to come back and at this time, when they knew there was a refusal report. So I'm not prepared to support a deferral on this one.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. I would second that if given the opportunity. Thank you.
So... What kind of a motion do I have?
So, well, my motion is to refuse the application for all the reasons stated in the planning report, the fact that a tree has to be removed, and also that I don't believe it meets the four tests.
All right. So your recommendation is refusal. I have a motion to refuse this application. Do I have a second, or...
Chair, thank you. I second the motion.
Okay. The application is... I have a motion to refuse this application. All those in favor of refusal? The application is refused. Thank you very much. That refusal was unanimous. I believe we are on item number eight. Seven Landry Avenue. This is an application to construct a new two-story dwelling. It was previously deferred. And the variances are... For coverage... Sorry, my machine just froze there for a moment. See if I can unfreeze it. Okay, there are twelve variances. I'm not going to read them all. This is seven Landry. Purpose is to construct a new two-story dwelling. Number eight. Is the agent online? Thank you. Good afternoon, sir. Would you please give your name and address?
Madam Chair, while we're waiting, I just want to remind you that we got a late revised notice on this one. So it's got the amendments to variances...
Thank you.
Two, five, and six.
Yes. Thank you. Is the applicant online?
Through the chair. The applicant has been promoted to a panelist and they can speak. Their mic is unmuted.
Go ahead, sir. Could you please give your name and address? Is that Mohammed Ali Hossain?
Through the chair, we also have another person signed in listed as the agent. I will unmute them as well.
All right, I have listed three agents. We would only take one as the agent. Yes, good afternoon. Would you please give your name and address?
My name is Bouinovisam. Thirty-five North Dubalover, Escabal. I'm the agent of the owner and representing this project to the community. Honorable Chair and all the members, with a turn again. This project actually was proposed as a single-family detached dwelling with no secondary unit right now. And has a few variances with the... We believe with the nature of metal. And we can referencing surroundings neighborhood as well as the other roads on those areas. Though, we had a concern from the community planning to reduce some variances on item number two, five, and six.
Yes.
And we already agree for the adjustment and with the suggested parameter. And we are aware there is a condition of metro links and urban forestry services.
Okay, so for...
And...
Okay, so we have shown on the overhead your amendments. You're deleting the request for a height variance. You're deleting the request for a length variance. And you're deleting a request for a depth variance. You are...
Through the chair, I would like to... I would like to confirm that we are not deleting all the... Like, the variances. We still will have the variances on the height, but we are reducing from our original proposal. That was ten point seven six seven. So we will reduce to the ten meter on the height. And then the length and depth as well. We are reducing the variances, not removing all the variances.
Okay, so for your height...
And those parameters were suggested from the community planning.
Okay, can I just go over this? So your lot coverage is still fifty-two point four percent. Your height variance is now ten meters versus the required nine, correct? Your sidewalls...
Yes.
You're still asking for eight point nine five meters. You're not reducing their height?
Yes.
The three stories is still required. I understand from staff, this may be a grading issue, that you still need three stories. Are you still looking for three stories versus two?
Madam Chair, it was designed as a two-story, though it's all on the three-story because we are using the garage on the basement. And the basement actually was shown a bigger height as on the front. So the zoning examiner considered as a three-story.
Okay.
It's with the basement.
Okay, all right. Sometimes we... Because of the grade, we call it the grading. You have to be three stories, although it doesn't appear that. You... The length variance, are you deleting that variance or are you reducing it?
Through the chair...
We are reducing...
The amendments are actually on the screen. He's already provided all this information on the screen. He's submitted this amended application. It's in the package. I don't believe he's changing anything beyond what's on the screen right now.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Okay, sir, I'm just trying to get confirmation. There's no length variance and no depth variance, correct? You don't need those variances?
There will. There will be a variance. Because we are really, we are reducing the variances from the original proposal.
Madam Chair, can I, can I clarify for you? Variance number two, variance number two is changing to ten meters and variance number five is changing to eighteen point nine five meters and variance number six is changing to nineteen point one six.
Okay.
Did, did, do you want me to repeat it? So, okay, variance number two is changing to ten meters.
Okay.
So he's amending it. Variance number five is changing to eighteen point nine five meters. So that's another amendment and variance number six is changing to nineteen point one six meters. So all three are amendments, so all variances are as amended.
Okay, all right. Okay. Committee members, is that clear to everyone now that we've done this? Good. Okay, so um, we've heard your comments, sir, and the changes that you are willing. Committee, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Um, I just, to the applicant, so in, in the, um, the planning had originally refused those variances that you've amended. Um, I, are they're okay with the amendments? Have you spoken to planning with the amendments?
Yes.
So they are amendable to the amendments that you've made?
They are.
Okay, and you're aware of the forestry condition number one and then the metro links is just an advisory report? And...
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Any further comments from staff? No? Okay, all right. I think we've got it clear. We've still got twelve variances, three of which have been changed to reduce the, the amount of the variance. What is the wishes of committee? Okay. Just a sec. Yeah, you have a question or, okay? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My motion is that after amendment of variance two, five, and six, as mentioned before, so with this amendment, I move this application be approved with forestry conditions.
Okay. Uh, metro links is a warning clause in an environmental issue.
Yes, that's right, thank you.
Okay.
Through the chair, those aren't conditions. They're only advisory. They don't need to be imposed as conditions.
Okay. All right, so the only condition we have is urban forestry. Okay, I have a, a motion for approval as amended, subject to urban forestry conditions, seconded by Mr.?
Madam Chair, through you, thank you. I would like to uh, second this motion.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Howe. All those in favor? The application is approved as amended. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and the committee.
Item number nine is for one thirty Barbados Boulevard. It is to permit the construction of a single-story accessory building in the rear yard. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to this item? I saw new people coming in. Nope, okay. Is the applicant online?
I'm here.
Hey, sir. Um, do you wish to make a presentation or do you wish to answer any questions? I'm not sure a presentation is necessary.
First, my name is Mina Tavfili. I'm the architect and applicant for this application. My address is fifteen seventy-four Place of Three, Belton, Ontario, and I'm ready for any question.
Okay, yes.
Thank you Chair, I just wanna say, I don't need a presentation. This was very clear to me, this file, for me, so, thank you.
Okay.
I have a question.
Mr. Khan has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, I would like to know first of all, before I put the question, variance number two, you're saying side setback. Which side is it?
Uh, this is the back and side setback.
Is it backside?
No, you have a...
Back and side, one side and the...
Okay, thank you. Now my question, is accessory building already in existence? Already built?
Yeah, there are two built. Yeah, it's already one building existing in, in the, in the property and the permit, uh, the building subject to this application, it's already started to be built, but it is not finished yet.
When was this built?
When did this start?
It is not completely. Because my, my client doesn't know this required a permit, but you already apply for permit and we fulfill all building examiner requirement.
Okay, and other question is, what kind of storage it will be used for?
It's just a storage material, no hazardous material or any hazards operational be done on further building.
For my own, for my own benefit, you're saying DDM, mobiles welding. What is this welding? Explosive or non-explosive?
No, the weld in the main building, the existing building.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the welding is the building, building A, which is existing a long time ago. This building subject to this application is only for storage material and no hazardous material will be stored in this building. But there is no anything operation will be happened in this building.
Okay, so your accessory building here is only for storage and there's no hazardous materials stored there? That's what you're saying, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, any other questions?
Correct.
Nope. Yes?
Through the chair. The applicant may wish to, may wish to amend their application to reflect which side yard setback they're requesting the variance for. It could be reflected in the notice and then we will ensure that it gets reflected in the decision, should the committee approve it.
Okay.
Can you, can you ask the applicant if they wish to amend their application to specify the side yard setback that's being requested?
Okay. Sir, we are questioning which side yard setback are you looking for? Uh, I guess Barbados is north side.
The one, the north one, the north side.
You want both sides, sir?
East and, and north.
Sorry?
Yes.
The north side, side yard setback and the rear yard is the north side. So where it says paved concrete foundation, that's your, where your variance is, is to be addressed.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So through the chair, for the record, I just need to understand, which side yard, is it the north side yard setback that's on their request, that the applicant is requesting the variance for and if so, do they wish to amend their application to reflect that?
Um, through the chair, I think if I heard correctly, and maybe the applicant can confirm, is that the rear yard setback is the north side and the side yard is the east, I think he said?
No.
Can you confirm? Or I don't know, maybe?
No, according to the site plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
The rear...
According to the site plan, we submit through our applications, the north side is the side setback and the east side is the back setback.
So the east, if we look at the...
So if we check the site plan.
It's the east side is the rear yard and the side yard is the north side.
That's right. That's right, that's right.
Just an, another question, because it's already started to build, was there any kind of order to comply, to stop building? Just curious. This is to the applicant.
Uh, I, I think my client received an order, but...
Yeah. Sorry, you're fo, you're keep cutting out...
My client received an order and we apply...
So there was an order to comply?
Right. I, yes.
Okay.
An order to comply, order to...
Okay, Mr.?
Because he was out of permit.
Okay, Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer, should the purpose then not read to legalize the construction of a single-story accessory building if they had an order?
Um, my understanding is that it's only partially constructed?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
And the permit application, we have submitted to legalize the existing, the subject to legalize.
Through the chair, for purposes of clarity, we can add to the, to the decision, we can indicate to legalize the construction of a single-story accessory dwelling, uh, building in the rear yard.
All right. Do I have a motion? It's for a side yard and a rear yard setback and a building height for a building under construction.
Thank you Chair. Thank you, sir, for answering our questions and helping us to understand your application. Uh, Chair, I move that we approve this application with the amendments of the side and rear in addition to the terminology that the Deputy Treasurer has stipulated.
Through the chair, I believe the, the amendments are, and the applicant can clarify this, in terms of the requested variance, I put it up on the screen here, I think really all it is, is there is no rear yard variance that's being requested, it's only a side yard variance, it's the north side yard setback. That's the only change, I believe, and the only other change is under the purpose, and I put that in red here, to legalize the construction.
Thank you.
But our notice was for a rear yard setback, that's no longer required?
We can take that out if the applicant is...
You're...
Clarify, subject to clarify.
Rear yard is required.
It's the, the accessory building.
Rear yard is required and...
The building is, my understanding is the building is being built in the rear yard, but they've applied for, they've applied for setbacks, they've applied for a rear yard setback and a north, a north side yard setback.
But the rear yard setback is one point oh four meters versus seven point five, so it's the setback from the rear lot line, right? Looks to be like he needs it.
Yes, but he's applying for it. It's in the application.
Okay.
That's variance number one. Variance number one is the rear yard setback. Variance number two is the north side yard setback and variance three is the proposed height of the accessory building. Variance one does not need to be amended, at least that, based on what the applicant has indicated.
All right.
Okay, so I, David's motion is still on the table?
I think so.
Okay, so I'm prepared to second the motion with the corrections made to the notice and I only wanna add, if this can be put in the notes, comments, that although the, in terms of this application, I mean, it doesn't impact anything, it's in a very commercialized zone. However, I would like it noted that certainly myself as a member, that I don't support any building being started without permits, so if that could be noted in the, in the notes.
Through the chair, we will note that.
Okay, so we have a motion for approval with a note. Do I have a second or for both the motion and the note?
Madam Chair, through you.
I'm, I'm seconded, okay?
Oh, okay. All right. I have a motion for approval, seconded motion by Mr. Stinson, seconded by uh, Ms. Holman, thank you, with an added note. All those in favor? Okay, all right, I'm going to...
Through the chair. Member Khan, opposed?
Okay, all right.
So you need to reflect that for the record?
Okay, all right. For an approval, one opposed. That item is carried. Okay, before we go to item number ten, I need a five-minute break.
Number ten?
Yes. Okay. We're back on item number ten, eighty-eight Craig Lee Drive in Cliffcrest, purpose of this application is to construct, yeah, to construct a garden suite in the rear yard, the application was previously deferred, and there are a number of, uh, amendments requested in terms of variances, all dealing with the garden suite. Is the applicant online? Thank you, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to, just a second, please? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to application number ten for eighty-eight Craig Lee Drive? Okay, not seeing anyone, okay, sir, um, to the applicant, would you give us your name and your address, please?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, my name is Anandu Shahji, I'm from C M Designers and Engineers Limited, five three seven dot four two, and I'm representing the client for the property eighty-eight Craig Lee.
Okay, uh, does committee want a presentation? Okay, no presentation?
We would like to have a presentation.
You would like to have a?
Yeah, yes, Madam Chair, we'd like to have a presentation.
I, I think, like, the, the Chair was asking the members if we needed a presentation, so we don't, we, I think we want to go to questions, unless there's something you want to add.
All right, we will.
Yeah, uh, if the Madam Chair knows, we would like to proceed with the presentation itself, if that's okay with Madam Chair.
You want to proceed with the presentation? Go ahead.
Yes, you can start with.
Yes, you have five minutes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So as Madam Chair told initially, uh, we had nine variances for this project, and the first hearing was on twenty-fourth of July, two thousand twenty-four. Since the recommendation from the community planning, we had made changes to the drawings and reduced the number of variance to six. Right now, we are, we have six variances which we believe are minor in nature, so one of the main reasons we have these variances are due to the constraint caused by the right of way on the rear side of the property, so if you refer to the side plan of the property, we can see that there's a three meter wide right of way which hinders the development onto that area. So our variance number one and three is caused mainly due to this, variance number one is regarding the soft landscaping, where the required soft landscaping percentage is fifty percent of the rear yard, we have only provided thirty-four point four seven. So if you did not have the right of way, which I mentioned earlier, we could have used that area for soft landscaping as well, thereby we could have increased the area to fifty-one percent, but we are not able to do that because of landscaping area. Moreover, we have incorporated a five percent permeable walkway in our landscaping area. Even though it is technically a hard landscape, we can consider as soft landscape because a permeable walkway can also allow the water to seep into the soil. And variance number three is regarding thus separating distance from the building. The required distance is five meter, but we, we have only provided four point zero four two meter. This is due to that obstruction caused by the right of way, that's why we are not able to fulfill this condition, if the right of way did not exist, we could have moved the building and the separating distance would have been five point five meter, which was not variance, but due to that right of way, we are not able to do that. The fourth variance is the platform encroaching the same side yard setback. The required side yard setback distance is two point four meter, but our proposed one is zero point six three meter. In our initial plans, we had a platform which was three feet high, but due to the concerns from urban planning, we have reduced it to just a seven inch high platform. This not technically a platform, it's more like a step so that we can provide a separation for the main building to the outside ground level, so due to this reason, we would like to consider it as minor. And the fifth variance is regarding the permitted size of garden suite, the maximum allowed size is sixty square feet, but we have allowed, uh, we have proposed an area of seventy-three point five eight square meter. So the primary reason the property owner is interested in constructing a garden suite in his backyard is since he is approaching a retirement age, he wishes to live close to his children, but also wants to maintain sufficient privacy for himself and his wife. So we believe that, we believe that this idea aligns with that, one of the key motivations behind the trend of garden suites in our city, as it supports multi-generation living while also preserving individual privacy. And the last variances, variance regarding the total area of ancillary building covered, the total lot area should not be more than twenty percent, but we have proposed a garden suite of size twenty point two seven percent of the lot area. So an increase in point two seven percent of the lot coverage should be considered as minor, yeah, so that's from all side, that's it from my side, so if the Madam Chair or the committee members have any questions, I would be happy to address it right now.
Thank you. Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you, um, I have, uh, three questions, but I will confine to one. Where is number one, number two, number three, number five? Number one, you have increased from the previous one, thirty-four point four seven, and requirement is fifty percent, still forty-five percent less. And number two retains the same, three same, four si- four you have decreased from the previous one to zero point six three. Number five, you retain the same, number six is the same, now, one, two, three, four, five, they do not comply the building co- uh, zoning bylaws, how do you justify I should be, uh, listening to you?
Okay, sir, so regarding the first, uh, variance, like I told earlier, we have a right of way on the side, so since it's a part of property and something we cannot access, we can build over there, suppose if the right of way didn't exist, we could have used that area for our construction as well, right? So if we had access to the right of way, we could have made that a soft landscape, and the total landscaping area would have been fifty-one instead of thirty-four. Since we are not able to use that area, uh, this variance is coming over there, same issue with the third variance, because of the, uh, right of way, we are not able to push the building further, and thereby the variance is, and thereby the setback is lesser than what the requirement was. In our first hearing, uh, the required setback was seven point five meter since the garden suite was taller. Right now, we have reduced the height of the building to under four meter, to exactly four meter, thereby the required despite. So since it's only a one meter difference, and also because of right of way, it would be really helpful if it could have been considered as a minor variance.
Sir, when did you discuss variance number one with the planner, uh, what was their reaction? To thirty-four point four seven percent?
Okay. The community planning had agreed with that initially, they had concerns regarding the height, which was on the, uh, during the first meeting, so after we reduced the height, we had send the, send the drawings to the community planner, and also we had a conversation with over the, with them over the phone. So they had let us know that since we have made the changes, they are okay with all the, with the existing plan, with the change, with the changed plan, they were agreeing with that. Even with the soft landscaping and also with the setback. Their major concern was regarding the previous height and also the platform, because initially we had a three feet high platform which was encroaching, right now, we have reduced the platform height to the seven inch, it's not a platform, it's more like a step.
Sir, I know.
So that we can enter the main building.
Sorry to cut you, I understand that there were previously nine and reduced to six now in front of us, but my question is, variance number one, did the planner agreed with that thing?
Yes, sir, they had agreed with it, like, over the phone, we had talked with her regarding all the changes and showed her the numbers, so she had agreed with our change, our proposed change designs.
Thank you.
We have a.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Planning report of July. Okay. We don't have a, an updated community planning report, we have a community planning report of July and nothing further. Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, all right, do you have any more questions? Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Okay, um, I have just a really quick question, sir, uh, the right of way, is that paved?
Sorry, ma'am, sorry, ma'am, can you repeat it?
Is the right of way paved and used for vehicle access?
Yes, ma'am, yes, Madam Chair, it's a paved right of way.
The question is, is it paved?
It's a paved right of way.
Is, is it paved or is it interlocked or is it?
Yes, ma'am, it is paved, it is paved.
Okay, and cars have to, uh, will use that?
It's not interlocked, it is spot.
All right.
Sorry, madam.
It's, it's okay, we will. It's not that, uh, materialized question, all right. We have urban forestry conditions and we have a petition of support, uh, on this application. What is the wish of committee? Do I have a motion?
Sure, um, Madam Chair, I, um, looking at the variances, I mean, a couple of them are, like, really minor, and, um, I think in combination, um, they do meet the four tests, they, uh, the city is encouraging garden suites and, um, to give, you know, additional housing, so I'll support the application, so I move we approve it.
Okay, I have a motion to approve, do I have a second there?
Thank you, Chair, I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion to approve from, uh, Ms. Omen, seconded by Mr. Stinson, all those in agreement? That application is approved, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, everyone.
Item number eleven, uh, has been deferred, so we're moving on to item number twelve, one oh two Beck's Hill, I understand this application is back in front of us, uh, because there was an error made in. Let's see, there is the error, the error was made in the setback. Uh, so we have a variance in front of us, is the applicant online? Thank you. Good mo- good afternoon, sir, would you give us your name and, uh, address, please?
Hi, my name is Leo Masodaria, I'm the agent for the owner of Beck's Hill.
And your address? Your address, Mr.
Eight one seven Cosburn Avenue.
Thank you.
Eight one seven Cosburn Avenue.
Okay. And, and I understand that the vari- the, uh, consent and variances were approved May first, twenty twenty-four, but, uh, there was a staff error referencing the side yard from the north setback rather than from the south setback, and that's why this application is in front of us again, is that correct, sir? I'm trying.
Yes, that's correct.
I'm trying to move this application around, okay, and I understand that you have a request for a refund, and that has been granted. So, uh.
Yes, correct.
Good, okay, committee, what's the wish of the committee?
I think Eric wants to go ahead.
Mr. Mr. How?
Through, uh, Madam Chair, sure, I, I can move, propose a motion, um, considering this is a staff, uh, error, and the application has been previously approved, uh, May of twenty twenty-four, I move to approve this application to address the error.
Okay, all right, uh, do I have a second there?
Sure, I'll second it, Madam Chair, um.
Okay, approved by Mr. How? Okay, uh, seconded by Ms. Omen, all those in favor? You're not in favor? You're in opposition? Okay, were you in opposition the last time round with this?
Last time round, you know.
Okay, okay, so you're being consistent still in opposition to this application, okay, all right, so your application is approved, sir, with, uh, one person in opposition? We will move on.
Thank you.
Okay, application number thirteen is thirty-two twenty, thirty-two seventy-eight Midland Avenue. This is an application for, um, I guess it's for a games arcade use, which is not a use that is, uh, permitted in that zone. I see, are you the applicant, sir? Okay, let me just see if there's anyone else. Just hold for a minute, is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the application for thirty-two seventy-eight Midland Avenue? Nope. Okay, sir, um, you have five minutes to make a presentation, give us your name and address first, please.
Yes, uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair and fellow committee members, my name is Roshan Thuru, I'm a planner at Design Plan Services, located at eighty-seven Skyway Avenue, Suite two hundred, and we have been retained by the business owner to present this, uh, application. So I would like to note that we have consulted with planning staff prior to this hearing, and they have indicated that they have no concerns or objections regarding the application. I've also submitted a detailed cover letter dated July twelfth to the Committee of Adjustment Staff and to provide additional background information for the proposal. So we are requesting two variances under the former city of Scarborough bylaw, and essentially both variances are permitting to propose, uh, a proposed use within the subject unit, which is a games arcade use. However, this is not your typical games arcade machines such as pinball machines and other electronic video games, if planning staff could please bring up the supporting photo I submitted, that would be appreciated. And while staff bring up the supporting photo, uh, these are claw machines for soft toys which are designed for kids and young families, there will be a total of twenty-four claw machines located along the east, south, and west walls of the unit, which can provide entertainment for customers of the cafe. So the commercial plaza currently consists of various uses, such as restaurants, retail stores, personal services, and specialty drink stores. In addition, the hours of operation of the proposed business will be between three P. M. to twelve A. M., which is consistent with the business hours of other businesses within the commercial plaza. Based on Toronto V two mapping, the closest residential lot to the subject property, which is on the east side of Midland Avenue, is approximately thirty mi- thirty meters away from lot line to lot line. To the south, west, and north, the subject unit is surrounded by other commercial and employment uses, which also include retail stores. Therefore, it is our opinion that the proposed cafe and claw machines is appropriate, will not have any adverse undue impact to the surrounding businesses and other properties within the area. For these reasons, I am of the opinion that the proposal meets the four tests under Section forty-five one of the Planning Act, and I would be happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you, any questions? Mr. Khan?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, through you, uh. First of all, I would like to know the location of the site, it is in building D, right?
That's correct, the unit is D one two five.
And sir, this is on, towards the road?
That's correct.
And across the road is residences?
That is correct, across Midline Avenue.
Sir, my question is related to traffic congestion. It's a plaza. And already there is a, that particular light has lot of lining of, uh, vehicles at any given time. And this type of, um, will attract more vehicles and people. So how you are going to accommodate, uh, the people who are going home, that they should reach home in time?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair, to answer the question, I'm not a transportation engineer. However, when I did visit the subject property, there is a dedicated left turn lane into the commercial plaza, um, which drivers can use. And I would note that, uh, there are many other commercial units within this plaza as well. And, um, I did not see a, a transportation report from engineering and transportation staff raising any concerns.
Did you had any meeting with the locals or the neighborhood people that this kind of business is being contemplated in this plaza?
Through you, Madam Chair, I have personally not. However, I only saw one letter of opposition. And that letter of opposition did note transportation issues which I believe I addressed. And they also raised concerns of parking. However, we did discuss parking with the zoning examiner and we are compliant with parking. Thank you.
Thank you.
I saw the information that you provided us, including a picture. Does the use exist?
Through you, Madam Chair, that is correct. This is a result of an order to comply.
Okay, all right. Okay. Any comments? Mister?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just had, uh, one more question for the applicant. What is the current use of this unit?
Yes.
That's the first part, is this just for claw machine right now or is there any other combined use such as drinks, food or anything like that?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair, it is my understanding it is a cafe and the, uh, the claw machines will be accessory to the cafe.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No, okay. Committee, may I?
Um, Madam Chair, if we're in committee, I would be inclined to support the application. If I could again ask staff, since there's an order to comply, to change the purpose to, to legalize a games arcade use within the existing building?
We will ensure that that gets reflected in the minutes for the record.
Thank you. So with that, um, I, I would support this application. Uh, I think, you know, they're, they're not going to sort of promote gambling. They're very simple machines, they're almost like a claw machine for kids or a teenage boy who wants to give a gift to his girlfriend, you know, impress her by grabbing one. So I, I don't see any negative effects by approving this use. So I would move approval of the application as I feel it meets the tests that we look at.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I will move to second this motion. I do note regarding transportation requirements, it does look like this, uh, the residential area is across the street from this plaza with fencing's across the street. Um, I do, I also note, uh, the claw machines such as this being an accessory use, uh, with the cafe being the primary, uh, business. Sounds logical for a plaza such as this. And therefore I will support, I will, uh, second, uh, this motion.
Through, through the chair, before the motion is, um, is, um, a decision is made by committee, I just want to understand, um, what the wording of for the, for the record?
To legalize, it's because it's already there, so to legalize a games arcade use within the existing building?
So the Committee of Adjustment does not condone?
Oh, the, yeah, the, the, again, the, the committee, Committee of Adjustment does not support, um, you know, well, in this case, a use that's not permitted being implemented without the appropriate approvals ahead of time. So that's, just, did you get that? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion for. Yes, did you want to speak to it? No, okay. A motion for approval, seconded by this Omen, seconded by Mister Howe. All those in favor? Those opposed? Four in favor, one opposed. Thank you very much, sir. I wanted to do a site visit and take my granddaughter up. But once I found out that it was existing, I thought I'd be out money, so I did not take her.
Thank you, Madam Chair and fellow committee members, have a great day.
Thank you. Like a just. Okay, moving on, that was item number thirteen. Item number fourteen is sixteen Martindale. I thought we had. Are you here for sixteen Martindale? Good. Come on down.
Before we begin, whoop, hello, before we begin.
Hold on, Deb, hold on.
You have to let me find sixteen Martindale in my files.
Paperwork.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And. It was a lot easier when everything was on paper. All we did would be change paper. Now that I'm having to find the stuff on the computer, uh, it's taking me a little bit longer. So, uh, let me introduce the application for sixteen Martindale Drive. It's in Cliffcrest Community. It's to demolish the existing dwelling and to construct a new two-story detached dwelling. And there are a number of variances. For this. We have six variances. Okay, so. For sixteen Martindale. Are you the applicant or are, are you a member of the community?
Are you an applicant or the member of the community?
I'm a member of the community.
You're a member of the community, okay. So, let me. And are you the applicant or a member of the community?
I am a member of the community as well.
Okay, good. All right. Is the applicant online? Good. Okay. This is an application to demolish the existing dwelling, construct a new two-story dwelling.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, can I go ahead?
Okay, go ahead with your name and address, please.
Yeah, good afternoon, Madam Chair and committee members. My name's Priya Kapadia from eighty-one Oakridge Road and I'm here to represent this application on behalf of owner of sixteen Martindale Road. We are here requesting approval for six variances related to our proposed construction project. And we kindly ask the committee and the community support as we believe that these variances are both reasonable and minor in nature. We do acknowledge concerns raised, uh, about the proposed structure of sixteen Martindale Road by the neighborhood community and the City Council Department. But we would like to, uh, you know, offer a broader perspective on why the requested variances are necessary and appropriate. So firstly, the primary reason for seeking these variances stems actually from the needs of a growing family. As the owner's family has expanded, uh, so too their requirements for living space. And the current size of the property does not adequately meet these needs. So the variances are not being requested arbitrarily, but as a practical solution to, you know, accommodate the modern living standards while we are allowing the owner's family to be in the community they want to be part of. We also understand that there are importance of maintaining neighborhood character. But however, as the neighborhoods evolve, so does the needs of their residents. And the requested, uh, additional space is consistent with the trend we are seeing in many new development in the neighborhood. And many families of the city are choosing this living arrangement of living together, uh, of all different generations to combat this living cost of living. And we also have seen similar precedents which have been set in this, uh, in this neighborhood along, uh, it has been approved as well as got the committee for, uh, community support as well. And we would like this project also to receive the same support. See, I also want that the committee recognizes the efforts made by the property owner to engage with their neighbors and seek support for these variations. As a result, they have received positive responses from some of the neighbors, which would be considered as a key factor in the assessment. They got approval, they, they, they got a positive response from fourteen Martindale Road owner, forty one Martindale Road owner and forty three Martindale owners. So just to conclude, we do appreciate the concerns raised, but we also believe that the requested variances are justified based on the practical family needs in today's modern living standards and how the neighborhood is evolving. So we just hope that committee will review these variances as minor, allowing us to create a space which aligns with the character and the integrity of the community. Please, uh, we, we just kindly ask for your understanding and support in this program, process. Thank you, and we are happy to address any questions anyone can have. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes.
Yes, Mister Khan?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. My concern, Ms. Kapadia, is variance number one. Uh, thirty eight percent more than the allowable. You are asking for four, for seven point four meter square. Here against allowable is two seventy eight point eight four meter square. What is the justification?
Reason is just, actually a joint family situation. And they need more space for, uh, all the family to live together and have a comfortable living space. And that is the only reason we've given a bigger space, floor space area. And we also know that in today's modern world, we can't expect live in a house which is too, they're too small for a big family, which, which were actually built like thirty, forty years old. So I think this is considerable increase and that, that is the only reason we give a bigger area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Stinson?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your presentation, it was well done. Um, the trees, I, I've read the Urban Forestry Services report, it's pretty straightforward. There's a significant number of large trees on the property. Can you just tell me briefly what your thoughts are you're gonna do with those trees?
Uh, so we are actually proposing, uh, two of. Oh. We are, uh, point are, uh, at, uh, three, the front of the house and, and back of the house. And we, we would take all the measures which need to be taken in, 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 in the variety of conditions.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, let's move on to the speakers. Good afternoon. Would you give your name and your address? And then you have five minutes.
She's asking for your name and address and then you will have five minutes.
Okay, my name is Guido Condros, I live at eighteen Martindale Road beside sixteen Martindale Road.
Can I have your name again, please?
Pardon?
His name again.
Guido Condros.
Condros.
Thank you.
Uh, before we start, I'm terribly sorry, I am deaf, I have a cochlear implant. This is my daughter Sydney Condros, she is my care worker. She'll help me with, uh, through all of this. While the cochlear implant is a new lease in life for me, it doesn't work in certain situations. This is bad for me, I'm sorry.
I, I have sympathy for you. Uh, as I've said, I've got allergies, my eyes are watering, I'm having difficulty hearing today, so.
She has lots of symptoms.
Give you a little bit of extra.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Give you extra time if you need it, thank you.
Okay. When would you like me to start?
Right now.
Okay. Uh, as I said, my name is Guido Condros, I live at eighteen Martindale Road, uh, along with my wife Susan Serenchuk. We have resided at this address in Cliffcrest neighborhood for thirty one years. Raised our two children, one who is here and one who still lives in Chris Cliffcrest with his wife. We have made lifelong friends in the area through community events and public school participation. My wife was also raised in the area not far from where we live now. Our Cliffcrest roots run long and deep in the community. Our home is situated next door to the proposed development at sixteen Martindale Road. My wife and I are supportive of development that respects the existing characteristics of our neighborhood, but strenuously oppose development which removes the healthy tree canopy, reduces privacy and does not respect the built form of existing homes. We believe the proposed oversized structure for sixteen Martindale Road is not in keeping with the prevailing heights, massing, scale and density of houses in our neighborhood according to the official plan policy four one five C. In this application for sixteen Martindale Road, there are six variance requests, uh, all of which, which we oppose, and they go beyond the generous zoning guidelines. Uh, but we are particularly strenuously opposed to two of them, uh, of these egregious variances. Um, them being, uh, request for excess floor space and the excessive building length. Um, in this variance application, uh, there is a request for floor space that is four hundred and forty seven point four square meters when the maximum allowed is two hundred and seventy nine square meters. This is sixty percent or one hundred and sixty eight point five six square meters larger than permitted. In my opinion, this is not minor and not in character with any of the homes in our immediate neighborhood and fails to meet the intent and purpose of the official plan. Uh, there are three newly built homes on our street further down thirty seven, forty one and forty three Martindale. They are very large homes in themselves, but all three respect the zoning bylaws and keep within the legal limits and with no variances. Uh, in con, glaring contrast, my home at eighteen Martindale Road has a hundred and forty two square meters of floor spade. The proposed structure with variances for sixteen Martindale Road is sixty eight percent or roughly, uh, three times the size of my bungalow. And in comparison to the house floor space is slightly larger, my floor space is slightly larger than eighty percent of the surrounding houses in their, uh, in the residence, uh, in our, on our street. Um, the, um, the variances for sixteen Martindale, uh, is in a supersized league of its own. Uh, it will have a flagrant overbearing presence on our street. The applicant is also requesting a building length of twenty point three meters, but, uh, the maximum permitted is seventeen meters. This is nineteen point four percent or three point three meters longer than the permitted building length. This is not my. This is not minor. It will produce a large monolithic wall, twenty point three meters long and almost ten meters high. If you take a look at this, this will stretch from here to the other end of this chamber, and it will go beyond the roof. This is what we're looking at going up beside our house. Uh, this, uh, like I said, it will tower over our house, it will directly impact on our privacy in the backyard and the enjoyment of our deck situated on the northwest side of our house, and also the enjoyment of our pool in the backyard. The proposed oversized structure will also cast a long, dark shadow over our property, blocking the mid-afternoon sun, plunging our deck and pool into twilight at a time that is normally sunny and warm and a focal point of our daily life and family gatherings. The proposed use structure will also impact on our solar collectors, which are located in the south-facing sloped roof. They are used to heat our pool and requires the sun's rays to work as the sun traverses the sky from east to west. Uh, they will now likely be in a shadow by mid-afternoon, seriously reducing their efficiency, perhaps even rendering the heating system ineffective. Now, this is really important when you look into the context. The solar collectors were a purposeful ecological decision thirty years ago to remove fossil fuels from our pool equation to mitigate greenhouse gas emissions. The solar energy, energy has warmed our pool wonderfully, uh, over the decades and continues to do so today with zero emissions. Uh, by not using fossil fuels over the past thirty years, I figure we've prevented nearly one point five tons of CO2 from entering the atmosphere.
Thank you, Sydney.
Unfortunately...
Can you wrap up?
Five minutes is up.
Oh, jeez.
You can do your last sentence.
Do your last sentence, Dad.
Okay, my last sentence. I'm really sorry, but the solar collectors is really important to me, and I just find it egregious that I may not be able to use them anymore. Uh, what do we do? Go back to gas, gas? I don't know. If you have a solution, I'd love to hear it. Uh, we, along with the members and our local city council, respect, respectfully request the committee of adjustment, deny the variance application for proposed structure to be built at sixteen Martindale Road. Thank you for your time, and thank you for...
Stay there for a minute?
Just stay.
Are there any questions?
No.
Yes, Mr. Stinson?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, sir, for your presentation. Just to be clear, uh, Google Earth, looking at your house, solar collectors are on the roof facing the street, or have I got that wrong?
Are your solar collectors facing the street?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for the collectors.
Any other questions of the applicant? Nope. Okay, thank you. Just take a seat there, and the next, nope. Can I have your name and your address first?
Good afternoon, committee members and staff. My name is Paul Nader Shotko. Um, I've resided at fifty Martindale Road with my wife Lena for forty years. Um, and I'm here today to speak to, uh, the variance application for sixteen Martindale Road. Uh, without repeating what's been said in previous letters of objections and what was just so eloquently stated now, I want to emphasize I support everything in the letter of objections from the adjacent homeowners, from...
Just a second, please. I'm gonna ask that we go back to five minutes and let you start over the, not quite sure what's going on here.
Thank you.
I don't know. Plus the fact I missed your name, so...
Oh, okay.
I got the Paul.
Okay.
What's your last name?
Uh, my last name is Nader Shotko.
Okay. And you are at...
Uh, I, I reside at fifty, five zero Martindale Road. My wife and I have lived there for forty years.
Okay. So, we're gonna start your five minutes? Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, so as I stated, I, I don't wanna repeat what's been said in other letters of objections that have been submit, submitted, other than I fully support the content of all letters of, of objection, including what was the deputation just presented by the adjacent homeowner, uh, the letter submitted by our local councillor, councillor Parthi Candeville, and a letter of objection submitted by the Cliffcrest Scarborough Village Southwest Residents' Association. I do wanna qualify that I'm not a member of any association, and that I did work in the housing and land development industry for over thirty years. I do support multiplex housing, I support garden suites, and I support rooming houses, because these housing options are much needed and long overdue in the city of Toronto. With that said, I'm an advocate of responsible and prudent development, and I always maintain there's two types of development, that which is responsible and that which is not. And when I review this, the variance request, and I'd like to, um, just, uh, bear with me here, please, I gotta open up. Um, when I was reviewing the drawings, and I know that some changes have been made, and there's, uh, the variance of, first variance is for gross floor area, and I, my understanding is gross floor area and FSI are sort of interchangeable, and they're a function of house density. So with respect to the first variance being sixty percent over what's permitted, I also want to indicate that if you convert that to an FSI, it's point eight, which the allowable is point four. So in essence, this variance is a hundred percent greater than what's currently permitted in terms of floor space index. I just find that, well, I probably shouldn't say how I truly find that. It's, it's disrespectful to prudent zoning bylaws. Um, you know, having worked in the housing industry in my life, having to work with zoning, learning how to build within those parameters, I just wanna say that, you know, with multiplexes, I support it, but the, the existing variance zonings allow for prudent and, and fourplexes. My house has three dwelling units. My house is nine hundred and twenty square feet. So we raised our family there, we put in a secondary suite for the growing family. We managed with no problem, and our, our children are not injured by it. So I, I just think this can set a dangerous precedent, um, because I also believe housing should be a place for people to actually live and not be used as instruments to generate excessive wealth and treat it as commodities. And, and that's basically all I wanna say. I just, I just think this application is way over the top.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Any questions of the applicant? Uh, sorry, the speaker? No? Okay. All right. Time for the applicant. You have five minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you all the members.
We cannot understand what you're saying. Uh, have you got another machine running in the, in the background?
Oh, are you, is, is still getting the disturbance?
It's better, Chloe. It's still not clear.
It's better? Okay. Uh, yes. Hello? Is it better or no?
It's, it's better. Please proceed.
So I would firstly like to thank, uh, the, the committee members and the, uh, neighbors who raised the concerns. So firstly, I would like to, uh, and, and we do understand that there are concerns regarding the shadow, shadowing, but we did study, uh, committed for the...
Through the chair?
I'm sorry, madam. We, we cannot understand what you're saying.
You're cutting out right now. The, the speaker is cutting out. Can you please, um, are you on Bluetooth? Your connection is, 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 your connection is poor right now. You're cutting in and out.
I don't know.
No, you're still cutting in and out. If you wish, um, can I, can I suggest you log out and call in by telephone?
Yeah.
connection, but it appears it's their connection. So we'll give her a few minutes to connect. The people that are sitting down, uh, here, you might as well go back up to a more comfortable seating.
Through the chair, um, we have a new call-in user. I'm gonna unmute them right now. Brielle, you've been unmuted. You can go ahead and speak, please.
(inaudible) Martin, sorry, the, the, so, and, and the community, uh, and it was coming for all the, uh, regarding, uh...
Through the chair, you're, through, through the chair, you're, you're, you're still, the, the connection is very poor still. Are you signed in twice to this WebEx call? Please take out the other connection, remove the other connection.
Is it better now? It's just, yeah.
Keep on, keep on, keep on speaking, we'll let you know. Keep on talking, and we need to test the audio, test your audio.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh...
That's better. That's better.
Personally, I would like to discuss about the points. Okay, perfect, thank you. So firstly, I'd like to, uh, uh, cater the concern raised by the neighbor eighteen Martindale Road about, uh, about his concerns regarding the shadowing and the potential impact on their solar collectors. So we did a, a, a quick sunlight pattern, uh, study on, on one of the apps, and it showed that they, 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 the property continued to receive ample sunlight until mid to the late afternoon in all the seasons. And we also understand that sunlight varies throughout the year due to changes in the sun angle, yet there is still significant daylight even during the shorter winter days. And our proposed development will not actually significantly impact the solar collectors because they are placed on the south-facing roof, and our property is in the line... And our property is in the line with the, uh, neighboring property, and that's why it doesn't...
Through, through the chair, through the chair. Excuse me, excuse me. Excuse me, please. Um, you, you've got, you've got two, you're signed in twice, and there's an echo. You've got something running in the background. Please disconnect from one of your, um, one of your devices, please, because all we, we are, we're hanging echo in the background. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I was just, is it better now?
Continue, please.
Just keep on speaking.
Yeah, I, yeah, as I was saying, that our property is in the line with their property, and their solar collectors on the south-facing roof, which is towards the street, and that doesn't affect the sunlight which they get during the, uh, morning till the mid-afternoon. And the concern about that the backyard is not fully, uh, shaped, uh, like, our, our property covers them, it, it's not that case because their own develop, their own house covers the pool by, by mid-afternoon, and our development would likely have a minimal impact. And we do understand that this is an important concern, so we are committed to transparency and happy to, 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 to,
Last, last time and then, because it's, it's, this is the third time, right?
Why don't you log out of everything and then log back in or however. Make sure you're signed off of everything.
Do not use Wi-Fi for your connection.
Did you hear that? The staff are suggesting you don't use Wi-Fi.
Use a hardwired connection. No, it's still not working. It's still not clear.
Colin, in, in terms of fairness, we can't understand her. We don't want to spend another five minutes while we're trying to give her the opportunity to speak. I think we're going to have to defer this application. And we'll defer it to the next agenda.
Through the chair, can I suggest, because there are people who have, who came in person to see this, that the applicant work on calling from a more secure connection with a clear connection. We, perhaps this, we go to the next item and come back to this. If the applicant does not have a clear connection after, like, when we come back, then we can, we can discuss that.
Okay. What's the...
Actually, I'm gonna ask the applicant. All right. Can you, can you come, can you actually phone in from a secure connection or a different location? Because right now, we're not able to hear you. Because right now, you're still cutting in and out.
She's not even able to answer this.
Give, give you a moment right now. How much time do you need?
I will, it's a different nature, you can print, um, next application.
Okay. We will, we will, we will, we will come back. We will come back to this. Okay.
Okay. To the audience, um, I'm sorry. We're going to have to... You just stay here. We've made our notes. We'll go on to the next application and then we will come back. Yes, sir? Okay. Thank you very much for those comments. We'll, we'll try. If, if we can't understand her, it's not fair to her or to us in trying to make a decision on this matter. So we will move on to item fifteen, which is six Rensberg Drive. This is to construct a new two-story detached dwelling. And there are six variances. Let me just pull this up. Do we have the, okay. We, good. All right. Let me just pull this up for me. As I said, this is an application to demolish the existing dwelling and construct a new two-story detached dwelling. Lot line, building height, building length, building depth, lot coverage, and a platform. So there's six variances dealing with those items. To the applicant, can you please identify yourself with your name and your address?
First of all, madam, I'm Ushaji from Designers and Engineers Limited, 53714 towards Carrow, and I'm representing the client for the property, Six Rensberg Drive.
Okay, Betty.
I don't need a presentation, Madam Chair. I just, there was some opposition. They were talking about windows on the west side. Can you just clarify what kind of windows you've got on the west side? And are any a bathroom window? And if so, can you put opaque glass on it?
Okay. To the applicant, did you hear that question?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, I did. Just give me a moment. So there are two washrooms in the west side. One of them is in, is for a bed, is for a washroom and another is for a study room. So I would like to say that we have provided enough setback on these sites. Like the setbacks required is one, we have a setback of 1.2 meters from all the, from the property lines you have provided. And all the walls are also compliant with the limiting distance and area of unprotected openings. So thereby, the windows are as per the city requirements. We have not done anything additional for the windows.
Right. But I'm just asking because when I read the opposition letter, they had some concerns about windows. So would you be willing to put opaque or, or some kind of translucent glass on the bathroom windows?
Yeah. For the bathroom windows, we can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll be providing...
Any other questions? No, we have a speaker. Is, is there someone in the audience who wishes to speak to this item? This is sixteen Martindale Drive. You sixteen...
It's for, through the chair, it's for six Rensberg Drive.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Yes, I'm reading the wrong one. Okay. I don't show anyone in the audience six Rensberg Drive. Is there anyone here? Why are we hearing all of this?
Madam Chair, if, if my colleagues have no more questions and the agent doesn't have anything to add that's not in the materials, I'm okay to move a motion.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. So I would move approval of the application because I feel it meets the four tests. It's within the context of the neighborhood, including forestry condition number three. And then for the record, that the applicant has agreed to undertake to put translucent or opaque glass on the windows, on the bathroom windows on the west side.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to second that motion.
Okay. I have a motion for approval from Ms. Wong, seconded by Mr. Stinson, with an added agreement for opaque windows on the bathroom windows. All those in favor? That application is approved? Yes. It's number fifteen, six Rensberg Drive, in eye and view. I don't. Is she the agent for the last item as well? Okay. We're going to take a 10-minute break. Okay. Five minutes break. I think we're losing patience with the...
Through the chair. Priya, if you can hear me. I see that there's a new call-in user ID. I'm gonna unmute that ID. Can you try and speak now, please? You've been unmuted.
Hi. I don't think this is Priya. I'm one of the opposers to Guildwood Parkway.
Oh, okay. My mistake. Sorry.
Yeah. Sorry. I called in because I was...
Sorry. I just, I just remuted you. We'll, we'll get back to you for, for Guildwood.
We're just doing a sound check.
Test, 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 test. Test, 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 test.
Colin, I think it works.
Through the chair. Panel members, if you could please return to your seats. We have Priya on the phone. So what we're gonna do is we have her on one of our cellphones. We're going to hold the cellphone up to the, one of these microphones and we're gonna hope that that fixes the issue.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay.
So through the chair, we're, we're back on item number fourteen. It's the rebuttal by, by the applicant. And the applicant has five minutes. Okay. Priya, if you can begin to speak, please. You're being held up to the microphone now.
Okay. So we are doing sixteen Martindale, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So can I start?
Yep. Go ahead. We can hear you clearly. Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Firstly, I'm really sorry to all of... Firstly, I'm really sorry to all of you that this is happening. I'm really very sorry for that, and thank you for giving me one more chance. I just wanted to say that for 18 Martindale Road, there were concerns about the shadowing pattern and the potential impact on their solar collectors. So we also did a quick study on the sunlight patterns for three different times of the year. And we found out that they receive an ample sunlight until mid to the late afternoon in all the seasons. And also that our development doesn't significantly affect their, the sunlight their solar collectors are collecting because our development is in the same line. Like, we have maintained the frontier setback, and then we have proposed this. And so their solar collectors are on the south facing. So I don't think there is any reason that they don't get enough sunlight. Their solar collectors capture enough sunlight in the peak hours. And concern about shading their backyard. So our development doesn't fully shade their backyard because their backyard and their pool is being in shadow through their property itself during the mid-afternoon. So our development doesn't significantly impact that. So I just wanted to say that we do a more clear and professional study of the shadows for sure because we want to be very clear on that. And regarding the area, I already said that before that as the house, as the family needs more space, we are just proposing to do it more, more area. And that's my only reason at this point. That's it, thank you.
Is that it? Okay, all right, thank you very much. Any questions of the applicant? Nope, okay. Okay. We've heard from the, from the community. We've heard from the applicant. We've had our rebuttal. I'm just going back here, so we've got... 16 Martindale, and we have... I'm just double-checking the number of variances we have here. Okay, six variances. All right. Major one is the maximum floor space area. Proposed is 447.4 meters squared, whereas the zoning is for 278. We've got a building height of 9.86 to 9. Wall height, 7.59 to 7. Building length, building depth, a rear yard setback. So basically, higher than permitted, longer than permitted, wider than permitted, and overall bigger than permitted. Do I have any comments? Okay, Mr. Stinson.
Thanks, Chair. I'd like to make a few comments. Thank you for your presentation, applicant, and thank you, members of the public here today from the neighborhood. This is a big house. It's been approved by those that sit behind this committee, which are the various departments of the city. And that's the part I struggle with because of their expertise. I'm just saying to my fellow committee members, there is a large application here. And because of that, I'll wait to hear from my other committee members. But just keep in mind that we have the, various departments have approved it. Thank you.
I, I'm struggling with variance number one. And I'm struggling with this. We had one similar earlier today, and we ended up deferring it so that the applicant could consult more with the community. So from that perspective, I would be leaning toward not supporting the application simply because I would have preferred a deferral. But I can't support the floor space index number. I just don't feel that it fits within what we look at in our tests. And those are my comments, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'm going to go into the next comment because I wanted to direct the committee's attention to the, oh, I think it's Cliffside, Scarborough Village, somebody or other, Rate Pairs Association. It is on your agenda as item number, in your agenda. And we often have this Rate Pairs Association that comes, they're not here today, but comes in front of us. They do a fair amount of research. And so I would like, if staff could bring up... I'm looking for the chart. Yep. I have it as the last page in this, in this item. Okay. Sometimes it's easy to see something simple. And in this case, I think it's easy to see something simple. You can see where all the houses on that street lie. They're pretty much in around a little bit higher, a little bit lower. This is an area where there have been some changes. But this application, as you can see, is two to three times higher than anything else that has been proposed. Higher, larger. I don't see any reason why it should be larger. If the applicant and the family needs a larger area, perhaps they need to look for a house in another area. We can't just say because they want something bigger that it would be approved. And I think what we have to look at is what is the overall benefit to the community? And I think that map, or chart, I think that chart shows it. I can't pull it up on my own. So I direct the... Okay, there we are. So there's the FSI. As I said, I direct the committee's attention to it. The staff have put it up. It is important when we look at variances, are we varying, or are we totally out of line in terms of what we are approving? Sometimes a chart really helps to show that maybe we are totally out of line. So that's my comments. Mr. Cohen, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Looking at six variances, my concern is variance number one, which is quite, quite a bit more than allowable. And the rest, I'm just contemplating. The staff has the recommendation for approval with conditions. And also the forestry condition is two and three. So I am debating between variance number one and staff recommendation. So I bow down towards the recommendation and will be for whatever the recommendation is.
Priya, any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would, I agree with my fellow colleagues on this panel. I'm having issue reconciling with variance number one and four. I note there, for variance one, it is a 60% increase to floor space. That's, in my opinion, very significant as opposed to minor. For item number four, the proposed length is over 20 meters long, when the permitted is 17. Again, this, in my opinion, constitutes a significant increase. I do appreciate the need, as the applicant's agent mentioned, the need for increased size for family reasons, for an increased family size. But I do want to note that, as panel members, we have to keep in line with the four tests under the section 45 of the Planning Act. And we do have to consider what is minor variance. And the size certainly, in my opinion, does not constitute minor variance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are we in a stage for a motion? Mr. Stinson.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for hearing from all the committee members. I would move that we not approve this application for the reasons cited. Thank you.
Do I have a second, sir?
Madam Chair, I will second this motion.
Okay. I have a motion to refuse the application from Mr. Stinson, and seconded by Mr. Howe. All those in favor of the refusal? That motion carries. This application is refused. Thank you very much to the residents. Thank you to the applicant. It has been difficult to hear, but you had your opportunity to speak. Okay. So we will move on to our next and last application. Okay. Our last application for the afternoon is application for 228 Guildwood Parkway. It's proposed to have a new two-story dwelling. And the variance is for floor space index. The permitted is 311, and the proposal is 433 meters squared. Are you, sorry? You're a community member in opposition? Okay, all right. Is the applicant online, or how are we doing this?
Yes. So through the chair. So I have Priya on the line, and I will hold the phone up to the mic. So Priya, you can begin with your five-minute presentation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, again, sorry for all the inconvenience. My name is Priya Kapadia, and I'm from 82 Glen Ridge Road. And I'm presenting this application on behalf of owner of 228 Guildwood Parkway. We are here to seek approval for only one single moderate variance, which is moderate increase in the floor space index. We also understand that there were concerns raised by the neighborhood community and the city council. But here, we are just concerned that there's just one variance, and why we are not getting any support on that? That's why I just want to pose the question that is it very realistic to expect new homes to follow designs of the houses which were built like 50 to 70 years ago while we approach at the end of 2024? And we need the modern families. We know that the modern families have evolved significantly since 1950. You know, back then, there were homes built for smaller, simpler living. Today, families require more space for larger communal areas, home offices, modern amenities. And the demand for larger homes reflects these structural changes, where functional and adaptable spaces are increasingly necessary. Even the city has been updating themselves in its regulations to accommodate the shift, recognizing that homes must evolve with the time. But why then are we shifting these new developments to match the outdated designs or the old designs, which would not only limit family's ability to thrive, but also hinder the natural growth and the progression of the neighborhood? Why are we not considering that there are future needs in the development as much as we value our community? So here, our proposal complies, just one... So our proposal complies with majority of the existing zoning bylaws, and we are only seeking approval for this one variance, which is a moderate increase in SSI. We designed this project to respect the character of the community while following all of the regulations. The proposed, the property owners' joint family, which includes multiple generations, require larger space to accommodate everyone comfortably, making this additional floor space very essential. And increase their...
Did we lose the applicant?
Through the chair, the phone dropped. And we will, oh, she's calling back. Give me a sec.
Hi, Priya. Can you continue where you left off, please?
Sorry. So here, I was asking that we are asking for a very modest increase. And we also, we should also understand that the requested variance is in the line with what has been already approved by this committee in recent cases. For example, properties like 215 Grey Abbey Trail, 481 Guildwood Parkway. They both were recently approved for the similar variance of SSI. And that's why we are already working in the precedent which was set. And given this precedent, it is very difficult to understand why only our approval is not receiving the same level of support from the community. So we kindly ask the committee and the community to consider this question we are raising and to support our request, especially in the light of established precedent being set and our efforts to comply with all other zoning regulations. Thank you, and we are happy to address any questions or concerns.
Is that it? Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation. We have a person in the audience. Committee members, we have gentlemen in the audience, and we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine parties listed in opposition. You have five minutes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Jamie Marcellus. I am the resident at 230230 Guildwood Parkway. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present before you. As the neighboring residents, I wish to express my objection to the application, the minor variance, for reasons I will get into in a moment, really focused on three key areas. So the first being that the application itself is flawed in a number of key ways. So just bring your attention to the application. Page seven of the drawings is actually not correctly labeled. The roofing drawings that have been included, say, 16 Martindale, which was just reviewed just a moment ago, not 228 Guildwood Parkway. Second, the size, or the proposed floor area is 433.3 square meters, which is the nature of the variance application. On the listed plans, the indicated GFA, which I believe is the same measure, is 236.17. So incorrect in terms of the size and scope. And then, I'm not a bylaw expert by any means, but there are a couple of other setbacks that seem to be in discrepancy with what the bylaw suggests in that they are overreaching. That includes the side and front setbacks. I think overarching to all this, which I'll come back to in a moment, is the nature of minor variance. This proposal as written, not included in the plans, represents about a 39% increase, which doesn't appear to be minor. That's speaking to the floor plan. I think the second point is, when the applicant talks about the nature of requiring larger space, I can appreciate that as a father, as a family person. I think the challenge that I have is that it is disingenuous, or appears disingenuous, with... with natures of both what exists on the plans, as well as what exists on site. On-site today is a unclear whether it is a licensed or unlicensed, but multi-tenant home. And so the concern is that, as the plans are laid out, that this just becomes a much larger, in fact, you know, significantly substantially larger than as a multi-tenant home. I think the second thing is, when the applicant discusses the idea of increased floor space for family members, they negate to say that the plan includes a thirty-foot opening on the second floor to the first floor, which is inconsistent with the idea of space. I get that it's modern. I get that that's what they're looking for, but that doesn't seem to align with the notion of having more space for a family. I think the overarching number three, the thing I will come back to, is the application for this minor variance isn't minor in nature. Again, it's thirty-nine percent greater than the bylaw allows. It is nearly three times the size of the existing footprint of the home, which is a large, I'm not sure if it's three or four bedrooms, but a, you know, a large double, two-story home. And so this does not consider, or keeps in line with, section forty-five with the general intent and purpose of the official plan is not maintained, certainly not keeping with the neighborhood. And I think the concern that I have, that I'd like to express to the committee, is that as these continue to get approved, the risk is that the envelope continues to be pushed. We just saw that in some previous examples, where rightfully so, we look to compare what was previously approved and judge that as the next yardstick. And unfortunately, that means that the next judged yardstick will be at something that is greater than forty percent over the allotted bylaw. So in conclusion, I don't believe the variances are considered, are not considered desirable for the appropriate development of the land. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Stinson.
Thank you for your presentation. Is this property just confirmed with you across from the Guild Inn?
Correct.
And you say the current use of this home is what unofficially you think it is? What is it now?
Rooming house, multi-tenant.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope. Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Who do we have?
Through the chair. So we have five people signed in. Online right now, we have Chris Fong, Dana Henninger, and three call-in numbers, which I believe belong to Karen De Souza, James Burney, and Karen Narayan. So we're going to start with the first call-in user, which I believe belongs to Karen De Souza. So Karen De Souza, you've just been unmuted. If you could speak, please.
Good afternoon, Karen. Would you give your name and address, please?
It's Karen De Souza, seventy-one Toy and Betrayal.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead. You have five minutes.
Okay. As a neighboring resident, I wish to express my objection to this application. This is not a minor variance. The measurements given in the application is larger than our bylaw permits. It's taller, it's broader, just as the objection letters have stated. And I just want to say I'm completely against it for the stuff they had addressed already. It creates a larger footprint, which impacts the water and the store utilities. The fact is that it, to me, under my impression, that it is used as a current rooming house. And the application states that it's a two-story, single-family dwelling. And due to like, because of big family needs, that doesn't seem to be the case. So I also want to question that it's going against the general intent and purpose of the official plan, that it won't be maintained. To me, like, if this is built with the rear balcony in the back, it overlooks multiple homes with young children, mine included, with or without a pool. And being one of those homes, I worry about like my children's safety, or the family's privacy. I do understand that we need affordable housing, but this isn't the case, and it shouldn't be within our neighborhood, because this is a very family neighborhood, very thriving community, as previously on one of the agendas for Regency has already stated. I don't, I object. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions from Mr. De Souza? Okay. Thank you. Next person?
Okay. Next, we are going to unmute Karen Narayan. So Karen, you've been unmuted. Please speak.
Hi there. So my name is Karen Narayan, and I live at 220 Guildwood Parkway. So I'm two houses away from 228. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak today. So I'm here to express my opposition to the proposed tear-down and construction of what we anticipate to be multi-tenant residence at 228 Guildwood Parkway. The house is currently operating as multi-tenant residence, which, you know, I'm a close neighbor, so that's definitely been my observation. And it really is not being maintained to the standards of the surrounding homes, and we anticipate, or I say "we," my husband and I, anticipate that if the proposal to increase the size of this newly-built home is passed, it's only going to exaggerate the issues we seem to be experiencing today. So I feel that in my statement, it really echoes a lot of opinions that I've been hearing throughout the day for other proposed housing projects in Scarborough, but I feel it bears repeating. Firstly, I want to acknowledge, like, I realize we're facing a housing crisis in Toronto. Need for housing options is real, but I believe that this particular proposal is not the right solution for our neighborhood. Increasing housing density must be done thoughtfully, and with respect to the character of the community and the infrastructure in place to support it, as well as the environment. This proposal, you know, we talked about the numbers here. You know, they're proposing square footage of four hundred and thirty-three square meters, and today, the house as it stands is two hundred and twenty-two meter squared. I mean, the significant increase in size, along with the plan for eight bedrooms, raises a lot of concerns about the variance being requested to the bylaw. Like others have said, this does not seem minor to me. A thirty-nine percent increase in the allowable space to be built would be a significant change, not only to the street today, but for any future build. Treating it as a minor adjustment is just not accurate. I have some other concerns in terms of parking. Significant consideration, despite the house size, there's no planned increase in the size of the garage, meaning we have no provision for additional parking. As many of you know, Guildwood Parkway is a two-lane road that serves as the main thoroughfare of vehicles and a one-sixteen bus line. Where are those construction vehicles going to park during the building process? I've had some minor renovations on my property, and I know what burden this can be on the community. You know, this is, what, is it going to take a year, two years? What is going to happen during that time? Definitely going to cause major disruptions in traffic flow and impact of daily commute for residents. Utility infrastructure, what are the considerations there? Our neighborhood is not designed to support these high-density housing, and the strain on these services could lead to long-term issues for the entire area. I'd like to know what the infrastructure capacity assessment has, if it's been conducted, what is that telling the developers? Another key concern we haven't talked about is student safety. The proposed site is located right between Jack Minor Public School and Laurier Collegiate High School, both of which are within a half a kilometer of the demolition of the new construction site. The area experiences extremely heavy foot traffic from students, and introducing construction vehicles, equipment in the area poses significant risks to their safety. Additionally, proposal could lead to an environmental impact. You know, the property, old growth trees, which are part of our green heritage here in Guildwood, and it looks like they're proposing to tear down two of the five trees on the property, definitely is going to have an environmental impact. Concern about privacy of residents, multi-tenant residents with higher density leading to potential disruptions for everyone around, definitely behind neighbors, next-door neighbors, all of those. But finally, Guildwood's a historically quiet community, and Guildwood Parkway in particular, known for its charm and its character. So tearing down this perfectly viable home sets a dangerous precedent for future development. In conclusion, I do support the need for housing in the city, but I believe this proposal does not align with the purpose of our community, and I urge the committee to consider the broader consequences of the project. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions for Nancy? Or first Karen? No? Okay. Our next?
Through the chair. We're going to unmute the call-in user for James Burney. So James, I've just unmuted you. If you could please speak.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. Burney.
Can you hear me okay? Yep. Good afternoon. My name is James Burney. I live at seventy-three Toy and Betrayal, directly behind, directly behind 228 Guildwood. I live with my wife and four children. And at the moment, I believe there's upwards of seventeen people currently living on the property. And I have a number of concerns, which bring me to be opposed to this request here. So the first being that I don't believe that it passes the, all four of the tests here, specifically the test, considering this is a minor variance. We're talking about an increase of thirteen hundred feet over the allowable size, or three hundred and eleven meters. And a gentleman was speaking earlier, and his entire house was about nine hundred and fifty, nine hundred and fifty square feet. So I have a hard time understanding how we can say that thirteen hundred square feet is bigger than the allowable size is a minor variance. Secondly, in looking at the plans, the first plans that showed up were an eight-bedroom house with three kitchens, which suddenly then changed, once there was some opposition, to a five or six-bedroom house, if you remember it now. So my concern is what's going to happen after this is approved. Specifically to do with, in looking at the plans, I'm looking at, thinking about privacy for myself, as well as the neighbors on the other side. And to the rear of this property, the windows on the second story, there's about twenty-seven feet on the east side, on the second floor, of large windows, side by side, as well as about twenty-seven feet of glass doors on the main floor, and then a balcony, which would also cause privacy issues for all the surrounding neighbors. The second point I'm concerned about is the water table in this neighborhood is already not in great state at the moment, and putting a dwelling of this size in there is only going to increase the problem. I know a number of years ago, the city had us make some changes to our downspouts, because the infrastructure here couldn't handle the water. And I'm concerned they don't have a plan in place to handle the increased sewage, the raising of the water table. And I do think that this is setting a dangerous precedent, as the previous caller mentioned. So I'm vehemently opposed to this, to this request. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Burney. The next person?
Through the chair, Chris Fong. You have been unmuted. If you could please speak. Through the chair, Chris, I will unmute you. Don't touch any buttons, please. You've been unmuted. You can go ahead and speak now.
Hi. It's Chris Fong. I'm at seventy-five Toy and Betrayal. My backyard backs onto 228 Guildwood. My concern is primarily with the water table, as previously mentioned by the previous speaker. The water table here is really bad, and in the past, downspouts, you know, the disconnections has been put in place to prevent the flooding that's been occurring. With the heavy rains this past June and July, we've seen that. And my main concern is that with the construction, the change to this property, that could severely impact what's already a problem in this neighborhood that we're facing right now.
Okay.
I'm opposed to this change in use of the property. And to be quite honest, there really wasn't any reach-out. We only found out about this from letter notification from the city.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for this applicant? Just to be clear, you live right behind this property, sir?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And there was no community outreach? The applicant or anyone else?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Our next person?
Through the chair. This is our last speaker. Dana, you have now been unmuted. If you could please speak.
Hi. My name is Dana Henninger. I live at nineteen Earsworth Drive. I'd like to oppose the application. I do not feel that this is a minor variance. The size going from two hundred and twenty-two square meters to four hundred and thirty-three is quite significant. Also, claiming a single family of eight bedrooms is not so common. I also find it's not in keeping with the, most of the homes that are in Guildwood, which would have three to four bedrooms. It's located on the main road that runs right through this neighborhood. Guildwood is a very friendly and vibrant community with lots going on. We even have a Guildwood flag. We have a definite feel and friendliness to this area. And most of all, I love going to Guild Park, and this property is directly across from it, and to me, it would just stand out and not blend in with the other homes of the neighborhood. There's many events, public and private, that take place in this park, and for all those visiting, they would see this as well. And as others have said, I think this would set precedence to open this, to change other parts of the neighborhood as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions for Dana?
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Back to the applicant. How are we?
Through the chair. I'm just going to put the microphone towards the phone. Priol, you can begin your rebuttal. You'll have five minutes. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair and committee members, for giving me the chance to talk about the concerns which the neighbor has. Firstly, I would like to point out to the concern about the rooming house. I wanted to say that the property in question is proposed as a detached, single-family home with one legal secondary unit in basement. It is not, nor it is intended to be a rooming house at all. And my client purchased this home with the intention of residing there with his growing family, and the proposed renovations are specifically to create a modern, functional space that accommodates their needs. So it is not a rooming house at all. Secondly, I wanted to talk about the traffic concerns which the neighbors have about during the construction, and we do understand their concern. But rest assured, the construction will comply with all the local traffic and construction regulations, and we will implement all the measures to minimize the disruptions and ensure that any impact on the traffic in Guildwood Park is kept to a minimum. There were other concerns about the building size, and, I mean, there's only one variance which we are considering here, and I think that is the need of a modern world, and how the family evolves, and how the housing society has been evolving. So I think this variance is very minimal in nature, and these precedents have been seen in the past in the same neighborhood. So we would like to really ask the committee to please consider this as minded. And also, there is a question about, like, the big window at the back. So the city team has already reviewed and confirmed the drawing previously, when it was submitted, so I think there shouldn't be any concerns from the city. And it is only to say that this house, my client is building this house for next thirty to forty years, and he wants to bring his own identity into the house, and that's why this house is, you know, a little bit bigger in the size. And I think, I think... And I think, I think this is, this should be considered minor in nature, and committee should approve this variance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. That is the full extent of all the comments and the rebuttal. Any comments from committee? Yes, Mr. Stinson?
Thank you, Chair. This is a historic sort of enclave down here by the Scarborough Guild Inn. It's got a lot of history in our city. We've talked at length today, several files, about community character. So I'm just going to make that clear on the record, that this is a significant little area with a history to it. And that's something I want to, to put on the record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? No other comments?
Well, I'll just make a con, we're again dealing with an FSI variance that's quite large and very similar to two earlier applications, one in particular. Yeah, so again, I, I'm really struggling with the floor space index. I mean, it's a new build. I don't understand why this variance needs to be this big. And, you know, and also the, I think the, the home itself, from a character perspective, it's, I'm not sure it's, to Mr. Stinson's point, you know, this is an, an old enclave that's got character. I'm not sure that from that perspective, it's a great fit either. So those are my comments, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to comment as well. I'm not a fan of the architectural design, but then we're not asked to approve the architectural design. I do understand that this is the Gilwood community, and this is probably the main road opposite the Guild Inn that does get a lot of people and a lot of tourists who go to the Guild Inn for activities or, or theater or the Arts Council. So it's, it's a main road with a great deal of visibility and character for the community. I too question whether this, this property has to be 39% greater than what the zoning bylaw permits. The zoning bylaw permits a very large house, as you've seen. I can't see why, or I have, I'm unable to see that a doubling of that size to 443 square meters from the existing 222 square meters is considered minor and appropriate. So those are my comments. Mr. Khan, are we doing this, Mr.? No? Okay. Committee, do I have a resolution?
Thank you, Chair. I'm considering everything that everyone said and hearing all the representatives. I move that we not approve this application. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would support refusal of the application. I, I don't believe it meets the four tests, and I, I don't believe this variance is minor, as several of us have stated. So I'll second the motion.
Okay. I have a motion to not approve the application by Mr. Stinson, seconded by Ms. O'Mahony, all those in favor of refusal. That motion carries. The application is refused unanimously by the committee members. Thank you very much to all the people who have attended. Thank you, sir, for attending in person. Okay. That is the end of our agenda today.
Do you want me to move a motion to adjourn?
I need a motion to...
Okay, I'll move a motion to adjourn. It's 3:52.
Thank you, Chair. I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn, seconded, and all in favor. Thank you very much, members. It's been a long meeting, I feel. It's not that long, but it's been a tough one.